We now call the meeting to order. If you could please rise to pay attention to the invocation presented by Councilwoman Mays, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce and welcome Dale Greer. He is the Minister of Town and Country Christian Church, which is in District Seven.
Shall we pray? Our gracious God, I thank you so much for these people you've placed in leadership here in Topeka. I ask you to bless each and every one of them, grant them your wisdom, and just be with them, and give them all that they need to be able to make these decisions tonight. I ask you to bless them and give them your grace. I pray this through Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have two presentations. The first one, the Shawnee County Vacant Lot Sales Tax Pilot Project City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're excited to have here Megan Barrett from Shawnee County Counselor's Office to provide us some information regarding the foreclosure process to address blight. We've been working with her, our Neighborhood Relations Department, Sasha Hutton, the Director, working together to develop a system that will be beneficial to the community. So, Megan, board yours.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for having me. Probably most of you recognize me as my part-time gig as the JDO clerk. I'm happy to turn that over to Ms. Younger next year. But I do work at the Shawnee County Counselor's Office, and here today, I'm talking to you about our judicial tax foreclosure process and how we're trying to partner up with the city and their initiatives you're already working on to address blight and promote neighborhood revitalization and encourage new construction. But first, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the tax sale process. It's very labor-intensive, and there's a lot of questions about it, misconceptions, questions as to why does the process take so long? So I wanted to give you an overview of that. So again, I'm with the county counselor's office, where the Civil Legal Department for the county, just as Ms. Robertson represents you, our office represents the Board of County Commissioners. One of our duties is to conduct judicial tax foreclosure sales. So in the state of Kansas, counties are authorized and, in fact, required to foreclose on properties that are delinquent on their real estate taxes. And after we go through the process of, the legal process of a foreclosure, we sell them at an auction to the highest bidder at a live public auction. So how does a property become eligible for a tax foreclosure? What is the timeframe? So the entire process is set forth in Kansas statutes, and the statutes establish a sliding schedule that determines when a property is eligible for a tax sale. So there's really three tiers. The first is a homestead property. So that is a property that's occupied by the owner as their primary residence, and we're not able to process, or they're not eligible for foreclosure until after they're three years behind on taxes. And for discussion purposes, we all know the 2018 taxes just came out. That doesn't count against you as a delinquent year. So right now, we'll be looking at 2015 and forward. The next tier is where most properties are going to fall. It's just other properties that include vacant and undeveloped land, commercial buildings, apartment buildings, and residences where someone other than the owner resides there. And those become eligible after two years of being delinquent. And then the statute also gives special consideration for abandoned properties, and that's defined as a building or a structure that's unoccupied and the owner has failed to provide reasonable maintenance. And after one year of being delinquent, we can proceed on those. And for the past several years, we have been working with the city code compliance office to help identify those and get those quicker, so we can process them before they become so far gone that we would need to demolish them. So the next question is, how do we find the properties that are eligible, and how do we choose which properties are going to go in the sale? So at the beginning of each year, our office is going to generate a report to find all the properties that are eligible based on those three, two years delinquent. And this is going to generate a list, on average, of 1,000 to 1,500 parcels, which I know sounds like a lot, but when you consider that, there's about 76,000 total parcels of real estate in Shawnee County. We're really only talking about 1% to 2%. So rest assured that most people are paying their taxes on time, as they're supposed to. So unfortunately, we're not able to proceed on all of those parcels. We're really limited to filing one lawsuit a year, and we limit it to about 150 to 170 properties per lawsuit. And the reason for that, really simply, is tax sales are an administrative and logistical nightmare for everyone involved. That's just the easy way to put it. But when we file on a loss, on the tax sale, on each property, we have to provide notice and due process to every single person who might have an ownership interest or a lien interest in the property. And so a list of 150 properties can easily, quickly generate over 800 notices that we're going to have to provide. And so having that many defendants really slows down the court's electronic filing system. Also, the sheriff's office is tasked with serving all those notices, either physically or sending them out via certified mail. So those two agencies have really asked us to limit the amount that we do, just for their own purposes, you know, because they have other cases to process other than just ours. And lastly, proceeding against a greater number of properties, we feel we're right in that sweet spot of what we're processing is a really good amount, because if we put more in, we would run the risk of potentially oversaturating the market. Bidders who come might bid less. They might just not bid at all, and then the county would be, become the owner of the property, and we'd have to maintain it. So for those reasons, again, as I said, we're limited. So we've developed, over the years, a process of selecting properties. And it's kind of a common misconception that we just choose them at random, we throw darts on a dartboard, or we just take calls from people and say, hey, my neighbor's not paying their taxes. Can you put this in a sale? Well, we're trying to get away from all that, and we've, the process is extremely labor-intensive, and we take a lot of, a bit of time and consideration into how we choose them. And the process that we've designed is, really designed to maximize the collection of the taxes we're going to recoup, minimize our expenses, obviously, calculate risks, because as I said, if the property doesn't sell, the county's going to become the owner. We obviously want to ensure overall efficiency. And lastly, but really important, we're trying to remove any suggestion of potential political or personal bias in the process. So what is the process? How do we choose? What's the criteria? So first of all, we're going to look at the overall tax amount owed. It's going to cost as much for us to put in a property that owes us $50,000 as one that owes us $500. We're trying to maximize the amount we're going to collect for all of the government agencies that are owed these taxes. We're also going to look at the property's value and classification. It's residential or commercial, the total number of acres. Because what we're trying to really look at is, if it goes to a tax sale, what is the likelihood it's going to sell? And not to sell, but it's going to sell for what we're owed. We're trying to recoup a majority, if not all, of the taxes owed. We do look at the total number of years delinquent, because a lot of these properties can get caught up in a bankruptcy process or another legal process that prohibits us from proceeding at that time. And so we look at those years, so as they're coming out of bankruptcy or that litigation, then we can then proceed against those properties. We also make it a priority to include owners who own multiple properties. So if we see John Smith owns 20 properties, he's not paying on any of them, it's more efficient for us to put them all in one sale, because then we only have to serve him one time versus over the course of multiple sales. And then, as I said, we have worked over the last number of years with the code compliance office to help identify abandoned properties. And we have put in 41 properties that they've referred to us in a tax sale, and 18 of those have been sold at an auction. So just to give you a very quick overview of just the time, the life cycle of a tax sale, and to answer the question, why does it take so long? So we have our list of 1,500 properties. We have to narrow it down to about 200. We then send that list of properties to a title company to get a title report. And with that many properties, it takes about nine months, maybe a year, to get all those back, get them all in our database, and establish the documents that we need to file against them. So first, we're going to initiate the lawsuit, file the petition, once we get all the title reports back. And then we go into the service process phase. So again, as I said, we have to serve notice on everyone who might have an interest in the property. And this is the longest amount of time that takes. It takes us about four months to get through this process of serving people, publishing in the paper, those sorts of things. Then we're going to go before the judge in the court and ask to get an order of judgment and authorize us to conduct a sale. Once we do that, we move into publication. So we have to publish notice of our sale. We have to notify everyone what properties are going to be sold. During this time, we're also sending out letters to surrounding property owners to let them know, hey, a property in your area is going up for this auction. And we send about 1,000-plus letters when we do that. And we also open up registration, so we're accepting registration for people who are interested in bidding on these properties. Then we hold the sale itself. It is a live auction. We have an auctioneer. You're waving your bidder card. It's pretty much all hands-on-deck event that takes us all day. We had about, we had over 260 people registered at our last sale. We pulled it over at Heritage Hall at the Expo Center, and it was a full-packed house. Then after the sale takes place, we have a lot of accounting to do, a lot of paperwork to file with the court to provide notice that, one, the sale's taken place, and which properties have sold, how much they've sold for, to who they've sold for. And then the judge actually has to confirm that that sale and authorize that it's a true sale and everything was done correctly. And that takes about 60 days after the auction to complete. Once the court confirms the sale, we can then move forward, and we have to issue deeds to transfer all the properties over from the previous owner to now the new owner. So we do advise people at the auction, you're not going to get your deed probably for 10 to 12 weeks after the auction has taken place, because of all the paperwork we have to do. And then lastly, after we've confirmed the sale, we transfer the properties, the court will distribute the sale proceeds that the court's holding to the county, so we can give that to the treasurer's office, so they can pay all the back taxes owed. Also, at this time, if any property has excess proceeds, meaning it's sold for more than what we were owed for the taxes, at that time, former owners or lien holders can make a claim for that property. A lot of people might think that we sold it for more than what we're owed. The county gets to keep that money. It's actually held by the court for past owners or lien holders to claim. So it gets paid, you know, if someone owns back child support or a lien to the IRS or a mortgage, those things get paid. So we do feel with our process, we've been able to develop a really good system. And just to give you an overview from our tax sales from 2010 to present, we have filed 11 lawsuits and held eight auctions. From those suits, we have collected $11.5 million total, and 8.5 million of that has been applied directly to the back taxes. And anyone who, any government agency that has a percentage of that mill levy is going to get paid. So the county gets a portion, the city gets a portion, the school district, the library, whoever had a piece of that gets paid those back taxes owed. And then 1.4 million of that has been paid out in excess proceeds to back, you know, lien holders and things like that. So that is a quick and dirty, rough version of how tax sales work. Before I move on to our, how we're trying to partner up with the city on the initiatives with our tax sales, does anybody have any questions just about the process itself?
Do we have any questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Megan. This is really great.
Thank you.
It's been nice to know these things a long time ago, too. So this is, this is great. Two situations and questions related. One is, I represent District One, and so when a property goes into default on their taxes, the neighbors are all watching it. But the taxes due on a house in District One are typically not as much as one in District Seven. And so we've had some houses held when we thought they were going to go. Is there a way to, for a neighborhood or a neighbor to speak up and get a property that they really think is sellable, that is at risk, onto the coming sale?
Well, hopefully, the next portion with this partnership will help alleviate some of those questions. But also, we try not to take just referrals just from anyone calling, but we do like to take referrals directly from city staff, because they are the ones that know what properties are the major problems. If they're always having to go out there to mow, if they know that the owner is deceased and it is just going to sit there, we have made an effort. And I even tell people, well, call the city, see if this is a problem property, and they can refer it to me. Because if I, if we opened it up to anyone calling, then it would be everyone's own pet project that we would be doing. So we, we try to limit that.
I wanted to kind of draw that out of you, because it's helpful for everybody to know that. And when you say the city, you're talking about Neighborhood Relations and Sasha?
Yes, and Code Compliance, yes, which falls under that.
Thank you.
Yes.
The other question I had, because we would, as you know, love to have you have more sales, or maybe if we can just get the houses that are at risk in line, we'll be better with that. But is the county charging as much as it's costing you for the fees?
Yes.
You are?
It costs about $25,000 to $30,000 to conduct a sale. We are recouping that, plus a little bit more. And I know that other counties that do this, when asked, I kind of ask them what their fees are that they're charging to make sure that we're on par with them, and we're actually charging more than most of them, actually are. We charge $375 for court costs for each parcel. So once you get in the lawsuit, you have to file, you have to pay everything that's owed in full. You can't make a partial payment. So you have to pay all the back taxes and interest owed, plus you have to pay the court costs of 375 to stop your property from being sold.
I just wanted to make sure, because we're going to talk about our legislative agenda later, and if you needed authority to charge more, I wanted you to be able to get it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Hi. You talked about bankruptcy, because I have property in District Three that's huge, that another company wants to buy it, but it's in bankruptcy. So is there any way to get around that or wait so many years?
While the property is in bankruptcy, it's a federal court order that prohibits us or any creditor from proceeding. So unfortunately, while they're in bankruptcy, that prohibits us from proceeding, especially if they're in a Chapter 13, that can last up to five years, that they're in that, that protection.
What if there's like a guardianship hearing that they're waiting on? You know, like I've inherited this house, but my siblings were arguing about who's going to get what?
We run into that quite a bit with the properties that are in our sale, that the owner, maybe it was mom and dad who owned it, they're both deceased, and...
So it goes to their heirs?
There's five children, and none of them want to pay to go through probate and get the property in their name. So the property's kind of in limbo, and we see a lot of that. Now, our process clears that up completely without having to go through...
So if I'm taking my siblings to court, and it's tied up in court, have you thought about that? I mean, do you have a process for that?
Well, that doesn't, that process isn't going to stop our sale. So them being, just fighting amongst themselves as to who the property's going to go to, that is not a, like a federal court order to stop us from proceeding against it for a tax sale purposes. And we have proceeded on people who are trying to get the property over in their name, their parent was deceased, and now they want to get it, and we see that a lot. But that doesn't stop us from proceeding.
So when you guys sell it, you guys don't get, they don't come back and sue you for selling it because it's tied up in court? You've never had that happen?
Well, we are, pretty much our lawsuit trumps what they're doing. They are provided notice, and our, our process is purely against the property. It's not against any person. So if we sell the property for less than what's owed, then we're not coming back after any particular person with a personal judgment against them to pay us what's still left. So they can try to fight that argument in court against us during the tax sale proceeding, but...
But the only thing is, the property would already be sold or demolished or whatever?
But that's why we try to make sure we get proper notice to everybody, you know, to let them know.
That would be, that would be my only concern, is if, you know, it's caught up in some type of guardianship or heirs or something like that.
Yeah. And that's why we do try to make sure, you know, when we're researching the properties, if we see that the person is deceased, you know, we search obituaries, and we see that most of the time in an obituary, it's going to show they're survived by their five children. And we list all of those children in the lawsuit and try to serve them notice as well, so they'll know. Some, once one person finds out, as you know, family dynamics, everyone.
Yeah, you'd be surprised what I see on my end. But anyway, last but not least, I, I would hope that you would take public input. And the reason why I say that is because there's a lot of people that are interested in different property, like property around my house, I'm interested in it. So if you're saying, well, we don't want it to be a personal project, maybe if you had just a link that they could fill out or something like that, I think that would, that would be great. Because people do want the next-door neighbor's property for a garage or, you know, different things. And I've seen that a lot in East Topeka, just even to keep it mowed, you know, so nobody else can really build on it. So I think that's important to take, you know, especially the NIAs. They go through and they do a lot, and they look at a lot, you know? And they report a lot, you know, to get this grass cut or that grass cut. So I would help you reconsider that.
I will take, I will take a note of that.
Thank you. Councilman Mays?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick questions. So you had mentioned that occasionally houses don't sell, and they become property of the county. So what happens from that point forward? What does the county do with a house that doesn't sell?
Well, luckily, we've never had a situation where a property with a building or a house on it has never sold. Those are going to sell, because we don't set any sort of minimum bid at our auctions. The ones that we have ended up with in the past, and thankfully, we're actually now, we've gotten rid of them all, they're just vacant lots of land. And for the most part, we don't put a lot of vacant lots of land in our auctions because of that reason, especially if it's just a lot of land between two houses. It doesn't make sense for anybody to have it, except either neighbor on either side.
Okay.
But yeah, if, if it did go through that process, and the county would have to hold on to it for six months, and then we would have to do a sealed bid sale, where we publish it through the paper and entertain bids and...
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you guys don't sell all the houses or properties that you have, and there is some sort of a backlog, I'm assuming. How big is that backlog right now?
It's hard to say, because people are constantly toeing the line of they have to be, they know they have to be three years delinquent, so they'll just come right on in, and they'll pay that one year, so now they're not three years delinquent, and then, so it's a constant. That's why we have to run this every single year. So it's really hard to say. And again, there's a lot of vacant lots that we're just not addressing, and hopefully, with the next part of my presentation, we're trying to address those issues as well.
Okay. And maybe I'm, I don't want to get ahead of myself or ahead of your presentation, but my other question is, is this all, are the tax sales handled exclusively by the county, or do you guys bring in a private contractor to facilitate any of...
We handle it all in-house, yes. So it's our office that handles it all.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have one more.
Yes, Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the 60 days between the sale and when the judge does whatever that order is that you said.
Confirmation.
And this past time around, I actually was working with, we had about six of them in District One, and they were all really important. And the, the language on the little notice that gets given to the buyer says, you can mow it if you want, but don't go inside and don't touch anything. And for our houses that are at risk of vandalism or somebody setting them on fire, what, who's, who owns that house for that 60 days?
And unfortunately, because the tax sale is kind of a buyer beware, you know, we're selling it for much less than what fair market value is, it's, it's just that, that process of, it is kind of stuck in limbo. We do recommend to people, go to the property, make sure it's maintained. If you know that it's empty, make sure it's secured. Obviously, if there's a tenant or somebody in there, they don't have any legal right at that point to evict them, charge them rent, those sorts of things. But we do try to make it clear to people that go by the property, make sure you've bought what you think you've bought. Sometimes people think they're buying a house, and they're not buying a house. So it's really trying to just educate the people who are bidding to do their due diligence beforehand to know what it is they're walking into. Because there's no way for us to know, we can't let them go in beforehand. All of the copper could have been stripped out of it. We don't know what the condition is on the inside.
Yeah, it was just that that 60 days limbo was a long time.
Yeah. And it's just, it's another part of the due process that we have to file a motion with the court to confirm, and then we have to send notice out. There's a waiting period, and after the order, then there's an appeal period time. So that's unfortunately, or fortunately, the legal process.
But they don't have the deed yet, so who owns it?
It's still technically the, the former owner. The county never takes ownership of it.
Okay.
It's still technically the former owner until the sale is confirmed and the deeds are transferred over. That's just, again, it's unfortunately in this limbo phase, but that's how it's designed, really.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comments? Megan, please continue.
All right. Well, I'm really excited to talk to you kind of about the partnership that we're forming with the, with the city. And surely between our office, county counselor's office, the Neighborhood Relations Department with Sasha, as I've called her before, my partner in crime, she's back there. And also, she's brought in the City of Topeka Planning Department as well, who have been extremely helpful to me. And this kind of started in conjunction with the Holistic Economic Development Strategy, more known as Momentum 2022, which, as all of you know, is just a strategic plan for to guide Topeka and Shawnee County. And there's different work groups that are involved in Momentum 2022. And one of them is the Quality of Place Work Group, which I'm on with Sasha, Bill Viander's on there, and some Topeka police officers, and a lot of other community groups as well. So two of the initiatives from the Quality of Place Work Group is to expand and pursue options to address blighted properties and ensure responsible ownership. And the other one is to adopt a collaborative program of highly-targeted neighborhood beautification revitalization. What more could you want? That follows right what I'm trying to do here. So Sasha and I started getting together and talking some one-on-ones of tax sales and how it works, and initiatives that the city is already working on, and how can we marry these two ideas together to make a more, you know, impact on these, these neighborhoods? So she told me about a few of the initiatives, and I'll briefly go through them, because as you all know, you know these initiatives, I'm sure, inside and out. So obviously, it all starts with the Topeka Neighborhood Health Map, which goes through five indicators of neighborhood health: poverty, public safety, average residential property value, homeowner tenure, and boarded houses. And then after they evaluate all those criteria, they give the neighborhoods a rating of healthy, outpatient, at-risk, or intensive care. And that's your 2017 Neighborhood Health Map. And so the areas in the red, dark red or light red, is where we're more focusing on. So in our discussions, Sasha told me about two great programs that the city has been working on in neighborhoods that are involved in those programs. So first one is SORT, Stages of Resource Targeting. And so these are focusing on intensive care in at-risk neighborhoods. So the city, obviously, as you know, is providing funds in the way of public infrastructure improvements, and also affordable housing investments. So the two neighborhoods that are going through that process right now are the Quinton Heights Neighborhood and also the Tennessee Town Neighborhood. And the other initiative that she told me about, which you guys just started this year, which I think is great, is the Team Up to Clean Up Program. And so city departments are teaming up with community partners to just target certain areas and help make improvements in those areas. And so all of your different departments have gone out to, you know, check the fire hydrants and make sure the numbers are on there, so the fire department knows where to go, and check the utilities and things like that. So the two neighborhoods that you guys focused on this year in 2018 were the Historic Old Town Neighborhood and then also the Central Park Neighborhood. And then I've been advised that next year, the two neighborhoods you will be focusing on are Ward Mead and also the East End Neighborhood. So just from those two initiatives alone, that's, we've already identified six neighborhoods that the city is invested in and trying to make, you know, revitalization, and then also, obviously, those neighborhoods are invested in it, too. There's momentum going on in it. So we're like, well, let's, let's focus on these neighborhoods, too, through our tax sales. What can we do? So what we've done is, we went through three neighborhoods apart, Quinton Heights, Tennessee Town, and Historic Old Town, and just from those three neighborhoods alone, we were able to identify 107 properties that are eligible for a tax sale. So we've referred those properties to our title company, and we would hope that a lawsuit on those would be filed next year, and the auction would take place the following year. Now, not all those will sell. I would say about 60 to 65% get paid off before the auction, but even if we were able to sell five to 10 properties in each of these neighborhoods, that could make a huge positive impact, because those are going to be more of the properties that are abandoned and not being taken care of, an absentee owner. Then we're also looking at the other three neighborhoods as well to proceed in the same manner. And then the last part of my presentation, as Sasha and I were talking, we did start talking about the issue of vacant lots of land. And it could be vacant because there was a house on there at one point, and it got so far gone that the city or the county had to tear it down. Or a lot of these are also, they were planned subdivisions, and then 2010, 11, 12 hit, the owner who owned them, the contractor who owned them, just ran out of money. They, they ran out of town, who knows where they went. They're not building, they're not paying the taxes, they're not maintaining the property. So we started discussing, how do we, what, how can we get rid of these? How can we get them into someone who's going to do something with them? So we came up with this idea of having a tax foreclosure sale of just vacant lots that are buildable. So I ran a list of all the properties that are vacant in Topeka and Shawnee County that are vacant, and that they're eligible for a tax sale, they're at least two years behind. Then we took that list over to City Planning, and they identified which of those are buildable, they're not in the floodplain, there's no dimension or setback issues they could be built on. We're also looking at other existing city programs and initiatives, such as the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Map, and also the Topeka Buildable Prime Vacant Lots Map. And so what we did is we kind of packaged this and put this together, and me and Sasha and Dan Warner with City Planning went over to the Topeka Area Builder, Building Association. Ivan Weigert has been instrumental in helping us with this, and they had their annual meeting on November 15th. So we went over there and gave them a presentation about the NRP area and this vacant lot sale, just to gauge their interest, to see if this is something that they would want to be involved in. And we're happy to say that, that's why we're here today, because they were engaged in it, we brought maps, they were taking pictures, so Ivan's really behind it, so we're excited to get this ball rolling. So this is the, the map of all the vacant parcels in Topeka and Shawnee County that are vacant and eligible for a tax sale. Quite a few. Not all of these are buildable, but a lot of them are, and so we're trying to focus on those. And this is your Topeka Buildable Prime Lots Map. And the ones that you can kind of see on the outskirts that are in red, the Planning Department has identified, have already had the streets and stuff built out to them, and that's what we're really trying to sell, that these are going to be ready to build on, you don't have to go through that process. So the benefits to the builders, as we presented to them, are the rebates. So if they're going to build in the NRP area, they're going to get that tax rebate for improving the property. They're also going to get a clear title, because all the prior liens or mortgages are going to be wiped off. And the big issue with these are the back specials that have been accumulating, that at this point has made it pretty much impossible for them to pay them or sell them, and it's a growing issue. So I think we're all at the point, cut our losses now and move on. So all those back specials are going to get wiped off, but I do want to assure you, any ongoing specials will still have to be paid by any person who would buy them. Obviously, they're going to sell at a tax sale for a lot lower price, so there's an opportunity for them for the equity. And then the reduced expenses, because we are really trying to market these in established neighborhoods, with the infrastructure's already been built out, there's already streets, utilities, they're not going to have to go through that process. And then the benefits for the community impact, foremost and right away, the new owner's going to be responsible to maintain it, so the city's not going to have to go out there and mow it, or deal with phone calls about environmental health issues, which is a big problem in a lot of these areas. More building hopefully would create more local construction jobs, it's going to help with that Momentum 2022 goal of neighborhood beautification and revitalization. Hopefully, it's going to create more housing inventory options, which is a big discussion right now at Momentum 2022, about if we're trying to get more people to come, live here in Shawnee County, we're going to need the houses for people to live. It's going to increase the overall property values, because now it's going to be a neighborhood and not just half neighborhood and half undeveloped land. And it's going to increase the overall tax base, because now it's going to be valued and appraised and taxed as a house versus a vacant lot, which is not very, not getting very much taxes. So kind of the timeline that we've done and our next steps, we've already presented this, as I said, to the Topeka Area Builders Association, and we did present this to the Shawnee County Commission back at the end of November. And we met with the city manager and got his stamp of approval to be here tonight. Thank you for that, Mr. Trout. And we're here tonight to present to you. And we, Sasha and I discussed other groups to possibly present to our Quality of Place Work Group, to get them involved in this initiative, possibly the NRA's for the areas that are being targeted, to let them know what we're doing in some of these initiatives, and let them know, and make sure we're not interfering with potentially anything that they're doing. Some Realtor groups, I think that's going to be key, so they can get the word out about these sales, and then possibly go to begin the chamber. And finally, just kind of this pilot program for bare lots. We're looking to start small, we're going to select maybe about 50 parcels to start out with throughout that area, the Topeka Buildable Prime Lots area. We're going to heavily vet them to make sure there's no issues with them, and that they're shovel-ready to go, and everything is openly open and upfront, and they know what they're buying. We talked about creating a good marketing campaign with materials and brochures, updating our bidder registration process, because a lot of these properties are going to be owned by a business, and we got to make sure that no one associated with that business is going to try to come from behind and create a new business and bid on it really cheap at the sale. So we have to make sure we heavily vet the bidders as well. And so we would hope to file a suit, so that any auction would take place in early to late fall of next year. So it's a lofty goal, but we're really excited about the program, and we're already in the process of trying to select those properties and vet them, so. And I'm, I'm sorry, that was more than eight minutes, I apologize. But that is the end of my presentation, are there any questions about the?
Councilwoman Lessor.
Thank you, Megan. I just want to say, very impressive to you and Sasha, and, and, you know, this, this is the type of forward-thinking project that excites me and made me be interested in running, you know, for this office. And let me know what I can do to help you, if there's any roadblocks you run into or anything, but this is just a fantastic, forward-thinking, out-of-the-box, you know, let's do something different and fix things, and I applaud you for your work.
Thank you, Councilman. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I too would like to echo those comments. I can't tell you the number of people that have called me that are really suffering because the house next door to them is in such bad shape, and no one seems to care or is doing anything about it. So, you know, steps like this to help try and alleviate that, I think will go a long way for our community. We've still got a lot of work to do, but you've got to start somewhere, and I think this is incredible. Good work, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heller.
I think this sounds great, too, but since houses are the big deal for us as well, would this be in addition to an annual tax sale that would have houses?
Yes, we would, this is, would be an additional sale, since it's smaller, with something we think we can manage in-house easily, that would be, it's a be a total separate auction on a totally separate day, we're trying to market it to a different demographic of people, because we're not wanting people who are speculators and maybe watch a little too much late-night television to come and buy an auction, buy a vacant lot that they don't have the resources or knowledge to do anything with. We're really wanting to market this to people who are going to purchase it for the intention of building a house and getting these vacant lots gone.
If I can follow up then, a lot of times, as someone mentioned earlier, people do buy the lot next door, just to have it. There's been some interest in community gardens, and we changed our, our ordinances a couple of years ago to let people build a shed, so they could put their stuff away, and how will you steer around those, too?
Well, it is a public auction, so we have to sell it to the highest and best bidder that day, and if that's...
It doesn't bother me, I'm just checking.
Well, that's true, that's who it's to, and we're going to try to market this heavily, and obviously, the people with the knowledge of what the property is and the potential of it are going to be there to, to bid it in the right way, and that's our hope and our confidence in that.
Well, it's worth a shot, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Emerson.
I was going to ask her if I could ask a question, I thought, she needed to ask you. Thank you, man. I have a question, what would this, has there been any thought what this might do to property values? For instance, you know, a guy buys a lot here for $30,000, has $20,000 in specials, he's paying, you know, builds a house paying those down, and now a lot next to him, the specials get wiped off, and it's being sold for $5,000. What does that do to the property values in a neighborhood?
Our sales aren't a typical fair market value sale, so that is not going to change, the Appraiser's Office doesn't consider our sales when they're valuing the fair market value of lots. I did have a builder ask me that, well, if I buy this property that's right now valued at $10,000, and I buy it for $500, is the appraiser going to change the value to $500? No.
And I guess I was more concerned about, what does it do to the property values of the people that already have the investment there in a property next to it?
Well, we're hoping it's going to, in the long run, increase the value, because right now, they just are in a neighborhood that's half-developed, and if we're developing the whole neighborhood, it's now forming it into a community, and that's going to increase the value. That's the hope, and that's the, the long-term goal here.
Thank you.
So Megan, I want to say thank you to you and to Sasha, and to all the members of the Momentum 2022 Quality of Place and Quality of Life Initiative that, that have put work to this. I, I love the fact that this was something that was brought about by the city and the county working together. We have the Planning Department with Bill that was a part of this. I know that there's other members of the community that are a part of this as well, and I think it's amazing, it's amazing that we're coming together to come up with these out-of-the-box solutions, because we are all working together with our different perspectives. So thank you so much for your leadership in this, thank you to all of our staff members as well, and to the members of the public that have been a part of this.
All right, we now have a second presentation, the Rapid Process Improvement City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to come down here. Yes, with, what I want to talk to you about tonight is Rapid Process Improvement. My part's two, I believe, if I counted myself as I rehearsed it. So about four months ago, I started working with staff. We took a book that I found in the past called We Don't Make Widgets. It's a book that is all about telling us as employees of a government, how we can do better at providing service to our citizens, and taking a look at it from a different angle. So staff read that book, we had some really good discussions over about a three-month period about that book and what it was tiling to us. The next step we went to is I hired a firm called PQS. They teach about a process called Rapid Process Improvement, and moved forward with hiring them to start teaching to us that process. We have 12 individuals that are, some of them are here tonight, that were trained as facilitators, that will begin to do the processes, reviews, and facilitate events for us to go through and look at our processes and make them better. The managers, including both department directors, deputy manager, and myself, and a lot of division directors, went through some of the same training, it's called Rapid Process Improvement for Managers. And we learned about how to do the process as well, how we could lead events within our own departments in order to see how we can do better, how we're providing that service. So now, I need to close it down. There it is. So... So PQS was started in 1992 by a gentleman named Steve Dickinson. He created RPI in 1995, and taught it for a number of years, including, he taught it to Mason City. We used it there for a number of years, and it still have facilitators that are trained there. I'm not sure how the new manager is using it, but we used it there for a number of years, and I found it to be very successful for us to look at how we could do things better. It was, the business was taken over by his daughter, Shelley Dickinson Yon, and she was our trainer, both for the facilitators and also for the managers. So she came to town and, and provided that training. What I'm going to do now is talk about the basic eight tenants that relate to Rapid Process Improvement. It's based on a lean enterprise, which has a strong research background. It is, utilizes a team of people that are, people that know how to do the process, both the actual workers that do the process, and also supervisors that oversee them. The team maps out the process, as we, how, how we do it today, then they take a look at where we can make improvements. Typically, we're looking at ways to reduce waste and eliminate waiting time. Those are also often the common things that we're able to accomplish. Once they've gone through the process and improved it, then they create a playbook that they can then follow in order to be able to do the process the same way each time in order to make it better. So next, once the team has learned how to do the process, oh, excuse me, the, the important thing that I think with this training is that it's just-in-time training. A lot of lean enterprise-type operations, they have to train the whole operation about lean before they can ever start doing lean events. The nice thing here is they teach the individuals, when they show up that day, what the process they're going to do, explain it, and then they do it. So that makes it possible for individuals that don't know anything about lean, don't know anything about this process, to be able to understand what the next step is, and then execute it, which is very helpful, saves time. So the leadership that's in charge of the process is often the team leader. So you have an individual that is most familiar with the process, often leading the team as they go through it. The focus is on low-cost, no-cost initiatives. We want to try and find ways that those particular low-cost or no-cost things can be done in the community. Sometimes it might result in the request for a particular item, but typically, you find ways that you can do the process different that don't cost you. After that's done, I think we begin to see a change in the culture, and I know we noticed it in Mason City. We start looking at things differently, we start looking at how we can improve things, you know, and it also starts changing the culture and mindset regarding trying to make things better for our community. This process creates that kind of an attitude. So at this time, I want to invite Leah Bowling, Performance Analyst in the Finance Administrative Services Department, to talk to you a little more about this project. Leah?
Good evening, governing body and mayor. As Mr. Trout mentioned, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the details of the training that we went through. But first, I want to, in our audience tonight, introduce and ask them to stand, as I call their name, the facilitators that actually went through this week-long, very intense training. So starting over on the left, Sasha Hahn. Then we have Todd Harrison with Fire, Brandon Bayless with Public Works, Darren Coughlin with Utilities, Bonnie Williams with Legal, Kelly Baker with the City Manager's Office, Sherry Schoonover with IT, Mike Hall with Planning, and Dan Hanover with Public Works. Not present tonight is Jana Harden with Police, and, oh yeah, Amy Chapman with TSG and Public Works as well. So as I mentioned, as facilitators, I am one as well, went through a week-long, five-day, very intense training with Shelley. We were over at the Law Enforcement Center for the same amount of time every day, it was very structured. We learned tools and techniques for the training, how to teach the just-in-time training to the participants in the team when going through the Rapid Process Event. So what that means is the just-in-time trainings are different tools, like process mapping, structural analysis, burial, barrier analysis, and things of that nature. We learned through case studies, as you see in the pictures on the slide, where we actually had to role-play and use different scenarios to accommodate for different personalities that might be injected into the situation, and how to counteract conflicts as they occur throughout the process. So these mock facilitation events are really how we learned through trial and error. This facilitator group, we meet on a monthly basis going forward to discuss possible projects and events that we can do. And that was done in the first week of November over at the LEC. Our second training was for managers, the RPIM, which is Rapid Process Improvement for Managers. It was also over at the LEC, and it was the first week in December. That was three days, same, very structured process and training, where they were broken up into groups, as you see in the pictures, and they actually facilitated their own events and learned the same tools and techniques within their own groups for these trainings. And for managers, it was everyone from division directors to the city manager and deputy city manager, managers of different levels, and other supervisory staff that took part in this. It was about 30 people in the room altogether. So they're going to really supply the main support and overall influence to drive the culture down through all levels of the organization. Managers will be working with facilitators to give them focus areas on processes that they may want us to start looking at, and we will work with them to facilitate those. So just quickly, I'm going to touch on the differences between what a facilitator-led Rapid Process Improvement is versus a manager-led Rapid Process Improvement event. So facilitators are trained to lead cross-functional area projects, which means if there's a process that crosses multiple departments. So we have the ability to work with the, the team leader and the champion to facilitate between multiple groups how to move through the process and improve in different areas. It really requires a lot of planning upfront with the champion, which is typically your department director or division head. Sometimes it will be Mr. Trout and Mr. Gerber. It's, it usually lasts three to five days, and for that three to five days, the facilitator, it is their primary job. Their five days, three to five days straight, working with the same people in the room, the team, to move through all of the stages of this event, to create new processes and improve the amount of time that's spent, and the amount of supplies, or, what's the word I'm looking for, to make it more efficient. Usually, they call in different people from different areas if they need bench strength for additional analysis or solutions that might be needed. And a team charter is generally what the facilitator and champion develop in order to drive the change. So the champion is going to be signing that team charter, saying, "I give the team permission and the, the power to make these changes in the organization and to drive us forward to more efficient practices." So with that is the, takes us to the Rapid Process Improvement for Managers. So the training that they had is actually encompasses focusing on their area of expertise, so the managers can facilitate within their own departments or divisions. They can pull in a facilitator if they would like help through the process mapping or bench, I'm sorry, barrier analysis, those different parts of the event. But generally, they can do it in their own area without help from outside. Their scope is a lot smaller in the project that they choose, so, because it's not cross-functional, it's just in their area. They lead the entire event, they serve as the champion and the team leader, and usually it is the department director, division head, or manager in that area. But like I said, they are at any time able to call on the Performance and Budget Division to request the assistance of a facilitator or facilitators to aid in their process improvement event. event. With that, I'd like to pass it on to the Intrum Finance Director, Nick Hawkins.
So, just to rapidly wrap things up. As the city manager mentioned, you know, this is not an initiative, this is a way we're going to be doing things going forward, and we're going to be starting very soon with trying, start with one to two events in February. Right now, department directors have been tasked with providing us with at least three different options to start with, and we've already received upwards of 10 to 15 already. And so, the group of facilitators will get together, will evaluate, and see which ones we're going to, we're going to start with, but starting very soon. We're going to be reporting on our success after each event. You see a couple of examples of how some other groups have done this on the slide above. It's going to be showing what the scope of the issue that the group was tasked with, and you can see kind of in the big top right box is going to talk about the savings that come as a result of this process, and it can be anywhere from probably $5,000 to, one of the case studies we looked at, it was a $900,000 saving just by changing a few small things. So, this is really going to help in terms of, I think, changing the culture. We presented this to our finance department at our staff meeting on Friday, and I was just talking to our payroll manager, and someone felt empowered enough after hearing about that, that they went and looked at their own process and they've found a way to shave an hour of time off of each of our payroll specialists' time during our payroll processing, which is, when you think about it, over 26 pay periods during a year, that's a pretty significant time savings that comes from that. So, this is something that we'll be hitting the ground running on. We really already have, as we said, we finished the managers' training a week and a half ago, put this presentation together the next day, and we're, we're running with it. So, that is, that's how I'll conclude, and I'll let Brent come back.
One of the things that is mentioned, the team presentations, one of the things we found was powerful with this program was to bring the people that are on those teams before you and have them do a short presentation about what work they've done. These are people that are out there every day on the front line, and they're going to present to you how they're making their community better. And I think it's important because they're all trying to do that. This is a tool that'll allow them to be able to have a structure to make that happen, and so that's why I'm very, very excited about this.
Thank you, city manager. I think this is exciting. I remember when we were going through the interview process, the one thing that really stood out to me, aside from, of course, your great answers, was the fact that you talked about lean and eliminating waste and looking for ways to just bring the staff on board with this. So, it's exciting to see that, that we're getting to do that. Do we have additional comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is fantastic, that this is one of the things that you and I had talked about as we move into the next budget process, is making sure that we're absolutely as efficient as humanly possible. I'm curious, as part of this process, is there any place where, not necessarily the public in general, but folks who interact with outside the organization take part in helping improve the process?
You bet. In the past, in Mason City, we actually did a process for development review. We had a system that we did for considering development. We actually brought in developers, and they were part of the team, to understand their perspective as to what it was like for them to go through a development review process. And so, they gave us their perspective, and it was very, very helpful for us to be able to understand where they see waste or where they see wait times occurring, so that we could then address those as we went through the process improvement.
Fantastic. And then my one last follow-up, not to make rapid jokes or anything, but is there some sort of expectation for how long this will take to roll out through all of the departments and organizations, or is it, is this something that we'll just do perpetually?
It will be perpetual, and that's one of the reasons we went through and chose 12 different facilitators that allows us to have multiple departments that have facilitators in them, because it's important, from the standpoint, you don't necessarily want to have a police officer doing a police process improvement, but you do take people out of their normal job for a week at a time, not to mention some pre-meetings that occur. So, you have to have people from other departments that can pull away from their normal job in order to be able to do this. One of the things this also helps that I didn't mention was that by having our own facilitators, we're not paying a consultant to come to town every time they want to do these. We have the ability to do it ourselves in-house, which is a big improvement for the amount of cost that we had to do this process. It'll be very helpful for us in the long run. And so, multiple ideas across the board. We will do at least a minimum of one per month, and a lot of it will depend on how fast we can move through them and address them. Multiple ideas that are going to be expressed, and I can tell you from the managers' one that we had, we were making significant improvements just in our short timeframe that we had in three days on the processes that we chose to eliminate waste and make the process better.
Fantastic. I can't wait to keep getting updates on this.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I think I've challenged you to go through every department and see what's efficient. I think this will do that, so I'm excited, because I think that would be helpful in cross-training or in areas of, you know, times have changed, things change, and we still have people that haven't retired that do it an old way. So, if they, they need to come up to date or learn, and I think that's what would be helpful, you know. I was training somebody that still took the paper file and went over to the file cabinet. I said, "We're not doing that no more. We're scanning and we're electronically filing, so we have a better handle on it, and we can get it better and quicker," and she didn't like that. She's like in her 70s, I get it, but we kept doing it and kept doing it and gave her a double screen. She didn't like that either. She's one of the one, you know, I don't like change, but, so once we did it, now she loves it, and it's just to get people to see it's to be more efficient and better at that. So, I'm glad to hear that. I'll be very interested in looking for updates, and I'm glad to see that you're having another set of eyes, not just the people that work in that department, that's what I'm hearing, and I think that's important too, because sometimes somebody on the outside sees something, you know, that we don't see because we get in the groove, so I look forward to this. Thank you. Good job.
And it is one of the processes, one of the things that I taught in the class, is that we do want to have people that have been here a long time that understand the process and those that have been here a short time, because those married together can often present different viewpoints that can create a better system, a better process.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, mayor. I, too, really like a process that engages the people on the front line, because it's so valuable, and you get, you get different feedback when there's new people and people that have been around a long time, too. My question is then, sometimes people get into a process like this, and they're just running through making sure a process we always did works better, but sometimes someone says, "Why aren't we even doing this?" Does this system have the capacity to accommodate that kind of question?
I think it does. It allows you the opportunity to look at the process and see, well, do we cover it in another area? Is it connected to something else and should just be attached to that rather than its own separate process? And so, it gives you the ability to analyze whether or not we're doing the right things, and then making sure we're doing it the right way, the best way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments or questions, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Very exciting. All right, we now go to item number two, the roll call.
Mayor De La Asa.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Mays.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Lester.
Here.
Okay, we now proceed with the board appointments. The clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Melda Henning to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2021. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Keith Finney to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2021. C is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Sean Smith to the City of Topeka Board of Electrical Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2021. D is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Dave Crook to the City of Topeka Board of Electrical Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2021. And E is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Angela Broxterman to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board for a term ending December 18, 2020.
All right, we have heard the appointments. Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. We have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting. The mayor does not vote. And this time, I didn't vote after I said it.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. If Angela Broxterman could please stand up so that she could be recognized. Ms. Broxterman, thank you so much for your service to our community. We really appreciate the fact that you stepped up to serve on this board.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks, councilwoman.
And then, before we proceed with the regular agenda, I want to take a second, because I told this individual to go home after this. I wanted to introduce to the public the successful candidate for the mayor's executive, and it's Mr. Trey Brooks. Trey has been working for the City of Topeka for a while. He was a very valued member of the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Relations, and we just really appreciate all that he does, so Trey, so that everybody sees who they're talking to when they call on the phone. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we now move on to the consent agenda.
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of November 3 through November 30, 2018, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B are minutes of the regular meeting of December 11, 2018, and there's a list of dance hall and sewer or mart beverage applications staff is recommending approval.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by the council, deputy mayor. We have a second by councilmember Cohen. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item five, the action items. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of the 2020 Social Services Grant Funding Priorities and Process Calendar.
Councilwoman Clear?
Yes. I know every one of you have read every page that was sent to you about this tonight. I know that. So, let me read the action we are determining. So, the committee, which was councilmember Hiller, councilmember Ortiz.
That's it, and you?
I thought you pointed like it wasn't. I thought you were here. Anyway, and they were, they were great. We really spent a lot of time, really thought about this and vetted it, and we worked well together. So, the committee's recommending that the governing body move to approve the committee report and recommendations, that's what you got, as presented, including a recommendation to approve the calendar, you got that, with a note that the 2019 ECD committee members review the two agencies that were grandfathered in in 2019 and the amounts that were grandfathered in. Need to look at that. A motion to remove emergency aid and preventative counseling percentages from the priority sheet was made, because we weren't using it. And a final recommendation is to request a total amount of $440,000 to be provided in 2020, right where last year was. Any difference? So, that is what we are asking from the council.
Is that coming in the form of a motion?
Yes, of course.
So, we have a motion by councilwoman Clear. We have a second by councilwoman Ortiz. Discussion. Okay. Oh, deputy mayor?
I just wanted to thank the committee for their work. This is always a tough one, and you guys did a great job this year.
All right, additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed on to the non-action items. If the clerk would read.
A is overview of the City of Topeka snow and ice operations and discussion on future expectations for level of service.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, our Public Works Director, Jason Peake, will go through a presentation in order to help us facilitate a discussion regarding our snow and ice operations. Thank you. Jason?
Just a second. Good evening, governing body. Ho, ho, ho. All I want for Christmas is some feedback on snow and ice. Gotten a lot via.
You're supposed to sing it.
Well, there was a line, but I think we crossed it. Okay, in all seriousness, this is the third year I've done this, and so, the order of presentation, I'm going to kind of give you a background on what we do currently, and then kind of go through a little exercise to get some feedback from the governing body on changes you might like to see and how we can provide thoughtful answers to that. So, just to kind of start off, you know, what I would say is our operations are event-specific. We scale to the level of event, and we focus on kind of three priorities. Our first priority are our materials and emergency routes, and so, the map in front of you here kind of reflects that, the red and the green being the emergency and primary routes. Our goal is to work on those routes first, get those clear and operational. Then we move to the secondary routes, which are blue, and then depending on the event, extended forecasts, those types of things. We may go into residential areas, but that's not often, and I know that's where you get a lot of the feedback from council. Just a little bit of statistics about what we do cover with our primary response, the, between these three routes, that's about 50% of our lane miles throughout the city. So, we're doing about 800 lane miles by tackling emergency primary and secondary routes, and then the balance, you know, would be in those residential and local streets of about another 800 miles. As we get into just the day-to-day operations of event management, we actually start planning for snow operations back in August, and what that consists of is going through equipment checks, prepping our spreaders, our plows, getting all those things ready. It also involves refreshing training with our staff as we're kind of switching from summer into the winter operations mode. And then we're also restocking material. You know, one thing to remember about our snow response efforts is they span two budget years. We are, we're on a calendar-year budget, so our budget ends December 31st, but, you know, winter weather, we can get kind of at the end of the fall and into the next season. As we get into the specific events, what we're looking at is what's coming weather-wise. So, are we getting snow? Are we getting ice? Are we getting a mixture of snow and ice? That will determine a lot of times whether we can do anti-icing activities, basically doing some liquid pretreatment. If we have, you know, rain or wet precipitation like we did with this last event, I, you know, we could be wasting money by putting that liquid pretreatment out, because the rain will wash it out before it can really be affected. Once that's, the events kind of determine, we know what we're getting accumulation-wise, we move into kind of our operations setup, so that's basically, you know, the first line of defense in that is taking our transportation operations staff, going into two 12-hour shifts, so kind of splitting the staff between those two 12-hours, so we kind of run that 24-hour operation. We have the ability to call in additional city staff from water and sewer if we need to kind of expand capacity, but we are limited just physically by the number of pieces of equipment that we have. And then lastly, as we're working through these events, I mean, the reality is, is we're also looking at what is that extended forecast? Are we going to get another round of snow? Are we going to have warming conditions that's really going to start to take care of some of those areas, and that, that kind of determines our response. So, that's just a real kind of quick, broad overview. Just, I know in preparing for this presentation, listening to councilwoman Ortiz's comments that we talk about this on a regular basis, I thought it was interesting. I talked to Tom Flanagan today at the county, and he said, you know, I remember we were talking about this in 1974 with the city commission about level of services, no expectation. So, with that kind of segue, I'm going to pass out a piece of paper, and like I said, all I want for Christmas is some feedback, so that's what I'm, I'm hoping to get from you tonight, but I just, I think to give you a thoughtful response about if you're wanting to change kind of what our current operations are, maybe provide a higher level of service, it's important that we're all on the same page of what that level of service means. I'm going to walk through some photos of what different levels of services are, and I'm going to wait for this sheet to come around. And I'm passing out a little survey, and basically... And I'm passing out a little survey, and basically all I'm asking for you to do is kind of, as we go through this and discussion-wise, for you to kind of check what level of service you would like us to see on different streets. And then also, what's the response time? Because our current response time is basically after that snow stops, is to get those primary emergency routes done within 24 hours. That's kind of our performance goal, and that's what sets us moving to that next route. So, if there's a desire to kind of have a more aggressive process on residential, how quickly are you wanting that treatment to be done? And so, that's kind of the stage. Everybody's got this sheet of paper, just looking for kind of an X in this box and an X in this box.
Councilwoman Heller?
If I could ask a question before we get started, and that is whether you're asking us to score this just for discussion purposes, or whether you're planning to take it kind of literally to the bank?
No, sure. I think, you know, the conversation was, you know, what does it cost? Ultimately, that's what it comes down to. And I just want to make sure we have some consensus on what is that desired level of service, because I think there's different expectations on that. And I want to spend our time wisely, coming back to you with a thoughtful response of what those different cost implications can be. And so, if there's some consensus around a certain issue, that'll help us be more efficient in providing your response.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, just because I've been through this rodeo, you know, since 1974, either sitting out there or sitting up here, about once every three years, we go through it. And, you know, all of our constituents call up, and they want it to, I call it Fourth of July, they want it to look like Fourth of July by tomorrow. And then when you chat with them and say, well, you know, if we do it this way, it costs this much money, and we have that, if you want Fourth of July, it's an extra million dollars or something, is that really what you want? They go, no, 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 that's okay, I get it. And so, I just wondered.
And we are doing some things, I think, to be more efficient. I mean, the city manager talked about the RPI, process improvement. I mean, we're looking at route optimization, basically with the data right now, our route's the most efficient that we have. We have moved to different de-icing treatment. We use a beet juice-treated salt, which helps work as de-icing. So, I mean, it's not to say we haven't done things differently, but just that priority of route has been different over time.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will restrain myself because there's so many puns that are available here. It's kind of a slippery slope.
Thank you.
I really like this idea. I would love to, instead of put checkmarks here, put dollar signs, and then push this out to the public at large and ask them how much money they want to spend on this. I mean, as I sit with no numbers here, obviously, I want every residential street cleaned in 24 hours, but I realize that costs money. So, I, you know, if you don't mind at some point, I'd love to, you know, fill us out with some costs and push it out to the public at large and say, how much money do you want to spend to have your street cleaned when it snows? If we could. Thank you.
You mentioned the scale and the occurrence that happens. I thought I heard something about six inches, and then that's when you start. I mean, where did that come from, and why do we do that?
So, that was just, you know, that's been our history, and I think looking at the need to get into residential areas, you know, when we think about accumulation of snow and the clearance height of a vehicle, you know, is it so much snow that's going to obstruct people actually being able to drive? And so, that six inches or greater, if those wheel paths and slush start to form, that's where you could have more, I guess, problems with operation in a residential area.
What if we wanted it four?
I mean, that's what we're trying to get at, is just. So, this discussion with you, this isn't getting at accumulation perspective, this is, I'm going to go through some pictures to see the end product. I think that's a better discussion to have than talk about accumulation. And one reason for that is, just set this graph up for discussion. What this is, is looking at 2010 to 2018. Each blue dot represents a snow or ice event that we had to respond to over those eight years. The red dot is the most recent large snow event we had right after Thanksgiving. And so, that was a little over six inches of accumulation, and our cost for labor, equipment, material was $129,000 for that one event. I just, I wanted to put this up here so you could kind of see, I mean, we do have some extreme large events. I mean, you can see out here, don't have the date specific where there was recorded, snowfall greater than a foot. But we also have smaller icing events, so kind of if you look at the bottom, near 200,000, less than two inches, but we spend a lot of material on salt and de-icing to do that. So, there's a lot of variables at play. And I just, I say that all because I think when you talk to your constituents and helping us understand what that level of service, it's better to talk about what that end product you're kind of looking at as opposed to just the cost. So, now, if it's no additional questions on that, I'll kind of get into some of the pictures and talk about what level of service looks like. Okay? So, the first one, and you know, this is our goal on the primary and emergency routes, is what's called a clear street. So, if you look at this picture, this is southeast 29th, and it's not dry like Fourth of July, but you see that all the ice and snow is removed. So, this provides safe passage. I think this is the ideal state we want to see, but what I'd ask to you are, you know, is this the expectation on our secondary routes, our residential streets for a snow response event? The other piece to that kind of second level, down-level service is what we call wheel paths and slush. This means that we are doing heavy plow and entreating, but basically trying to get clear pavement at those wheel path areas, but we may not have a clear and dry pavement. So, you know, as we talk about level of service, that would be the expectation there. And then as we move through the events, we kind of have two, two other tiered options, plowed. So, kind of that upper photograph shows a street that's been plowed but not had a de-icing element applied to it. So, you can see that snow's been pushed through, but we have some icing underneath. I think that's a concern, especially the last event we had, some of those areas that we got plowed and before getting pretreatment work, the hard freeze that came overnight, we had an ice surface after removing some of that snowpack. The next piece is kind of plowed and treated, so you can see that the road has been scraped. We've got de-icing material working to try and break up that ice. And of course, Mother Nature's our best friend in helping make that, that product work. And then the last level of service is kind of no action. I mean, I just, I'm a southerner that has relocated to Kansas, so don't have a lot of snow experience, but I just, I think it's, as Councilwoman Ortiz pointed out, I mean, we do live in an area where it snows, so people have an expectation of having to drive on that. What is that acceptable level of service, reasonable, to be a reasonable driver and be out and figure out how to navigate in the snow? So, sometimes no action may be appropriate on a certain event, especially if we're looking at warming temperatures coming within a couple of days, and that gets to kind of that response time as well. As you think about these different streets, what is your expectation to kind of achieve that level of service? So, is it, you know, within 24 hours after precipitation has stopped, said 48 hours or 72 hours? Because in most cases, that seems to be the, the amount of response time, you know, that we're, we're going from two 12-hour shifts to back to kind of normal operations and hotspot work. And so, if you're willing to kind of meet my Christmas list and give me some feedback, I will kind of take that information, and then, you know, we can, we can run some cost numbers on those different scenarios and kind of show what the implications of that would be.
Comments or questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I think the most important thing is that, again, we educate, because I get people saying, oh, they're going to start doing the residential, you know, or no, they're not going, you know, they don't, they don't understand the process, and then they're looking for it to be done. And I also think, I know in the past, we might not ever get to them, and then people are upset because we've said, well, we're going to do first, and then this is second, you know, so we never get there, and then they're upset. I try to tell people, you know, we concentrate to get people around town on the main streets. And then I, I try to tell them, we actually look at the buses and kind of break that up, and, you know, some of the school buses and also the intercity transit bus. The problem is, the governor called everybody, you know, so you can come in two, two hours later, so there was no people moving, so that didn't break it up. The school bus, they felt like they couldn't get up and down some of the hills, so that didn't break it up. And it was, it was, it was just one of those unusual, usually we get snow. I think we've done a better job at de-icing. I've heard that, I've seen that. And I think we need to educate them on just exactly what you said. We don't want to throw the de-icer out there, and it's raining because it's going to wash it away, where they swear the county and, you know, on the highways, and that's a little bit different. The speeds are different, that's a little bit different. So, I think that's a big, big part of that. I'd also like to see, because I know, I got a call that the school district, they had some heels and stuff, and in my neighborhood, I've got a lot of heels and I've got a lot of ditches, and it's, it's hard for me to kind of navigate to my house. I have to go back down and then on a, I try to stay flat. And I, and I received some calls, and I called them into the city manager where the school buses were having issues on different routes. Do we look at what's, because that's what I would like to know. Second in Norwood is, was just a hill, and a, a card went in the ditch, and it was a sheet of ice, and you guys did a great job of going out there and de-icing it, but what, do we look at prioritizing the streets on, you know, this one's kind of flat, so it would be okay, this one's, you know, Quinton Steel Heights is a, you know, they've got a lot of heels over there. I would like to see us look at something like that, and also maybe a hotline number that can be called, so that people know of that number, you know, to call, because they're not looking at, oh, I need to call, click it, fix it, or whatever. They're not looking at, I need to call, you know, I was at home that day, and I received a lot of calls. They're, you know, they're not worried about who is my council rep. What they're worried about is getting my sick parent out, you know, when we throw all that snow in, or there's just, there's just different instances. And so, that's, and I can appreciate this, and I will look at it, but I just didn't know if we can prioritize any of the streets to, to look at that.
We do have priorities within the routes, basically one, two, and three. That's going through, and like I said, we're going through a process right now to look at what we call route optimization, just as those routes are allocated, per the equipment, looking at kind of completing maybe turn-by-turn instructions so we can be as efficient with the resources we do have. That's not been done to my, my knowledge.
Mine neither, but you asked for my list.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm going to work on that for you. Jason, I don't want to disappoint you.
Okay.
And, and that's why I asked maybe a number, a catchy number, you know, just for.
Yeah, we typically direct people to call the 3111 call center, because then that way it comes in, as they answer it, it comes in as a service request that gets put into the work order system, and that's been our process for snow response.
Until we educate, we've got a school superintendent over the, the transportation that's calling me saying, I don't know who to call, but I called you. And, you know, our buses, and, and, and this is what was funny is, I seen this guy going around the block. I'm like, what is he doing? You know? And then I learned that that was, he was for the school, the transportation, and he's going to see what, what, which roads are passable or doable. And, but again, they said they didn't, we got them hooked up, city manager got in contact, I think yourself, but that's just one, one of the few that we, we want to just make sure that they have that correct number. Or if we can just, you know, have, just, just to catch it, get it out there, because for some reason, it's, it's, it's not. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But, but that was, that would be, be my concern. I, I thank you, I appreciate it, looking at the weather, and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough call. It's a tough call. I've always been spoiled. WPC, my cousin, and he's come and cleared the road, and he passed away, so now he's not doing that, so now I just, I just have ice. And they're, they're tough, aren't they, Tony, over there? They're. No, I'm not like Tony out there clearing and trying to make a buck.
Councilman.
Dr. Peak, I really appreciate you bringing this forward to us and asking for, for the feedback. I will say, you know, my company's done, you know, commercial, industrial snow removal for, I guess, 20-some years now, and the thing that's really tough is every storm is different. There's never the same circumstances, you know. If we'd have got that six inches in February, and the ground was already super cold, it would have stuck around more, you know, the position, you know, the sun is, you know, different parts of the year, the sun is more direct, and you get a, you know, more of a solar load on your asphalt streets, and it goes quicker. So, I really appreciate all your efforts. It's a, it's a tough thing, because every storm is, is different, especially around here. So, I appreciate all your efforts, and we've just got to keep trying always to get better and better. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you. I think we have used both four and six inches along the way in terms of that threshold to hit different streets. And just, just for the sake of history, I guess, with residential, I have to agree with Councilwoman Ortiz, just educating the public about what our policy is and then following it, because the, we have had the policy where we didn't go to residential at all, maybe sometimes at all, but otherwise, the threshold was only if there had been a snowfall of four to six inches, and still don't expect us until like day three, let's say. And when people know that, it, it really helps. Further, then you get the feedback, when you've been through this a couple times, you know, oh, when are they coming, when are they coming? And then you get just as many calls after they do come, because they just wind rode everybody who dug out their own driveway and dug out their neighbor and is mad that we came through. And so, it, it's, it's a toss-up there, and sometimes just sloshing slow through the residential street is, as hard as it is for you all to get equipment in there with parked cars parked on the street and, and various driving lanes that have occurred by the time you can get there. I just throw that out there, because I've seen the city be kind of whipsawed with, you know, why don't you do this, why don't you, and then when they do it, it's, you know, had one, one time where they came through Westboro, and, and the gentleman was really mad because they, whoever the contract, we've contracted before too, not just to use the city, and, and they were pushing the snow toward the driveways instead of toward the park, and he was, some people were standing out there yelling at the drivers. And I was like, oh, man. And why didn't they turn around? And I'm telling them, they, they can't, they got an order to just go. So, those are emotional times, too.
Well, the calls I got, I sat there going, what Jason say, what Jason say? I tried to remember. So, I think it would be helpful if there was even a recording. And I know we can educate, but I'll tell you what, we can have this conversation now, and somebody call me tomorrow saying, what are they going to do about my streets? And I'm going to go, you know what, you can watch the council meeting, and you would know. So, there, some, some get educated and some don't. So, even if you have a number with, with a recording, this is how we do our streets, you know, that we could pass on, that might help.
Got it.
Councilman Mace?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason is, I know I've talked with the city manager about this. Has any effort been made to coordinate with the school districts to get the bus routes so that we can ensure that those are plowed or treated?
So, you know, we have met with the school district, I mean, the bus routes that are on our emergency and primary routes are the ones that, I mean, that's our, our practice right now. So, I mean, that's what we're looking for, is there a desire from this body to kind of change that practice? But we, you know, we've always worked with the school district, we've worked with Topeka Metro to provide material and de-icer. I mean, it's a joint effort. We work with the county all in on this, and it's always been our, our practice. But as Councilman Emerson said, every event's different, and I just, I think this event, especially with the hard freeze with some of the material, definitely led to a lot more ice post-event that, you know, made the school district decide to be closed for two days.
So, I, I think that if feedback is what you're looking for, I think that's a good place to start, is, you know, when, when schools are closed, it isn't just that the kids don't get to school, but, you know, the parents typically have to take off an extra day of work, or if they can't take a day off, get them in trouble with their boss, or they got to find childcare, or leave kids home alone. You know, so, so I would personally like to see that as, as a priority. And then also, do we have the ability currently to partner with other governmental entities at all for snow removal, if, if we need to call in backup?
We don't have a formal. We don't have a formal agreement. I mean, with the county, we do kind of share resources on some of those periphery routes. I've kind of been talking with the county or other governmental agencies. I think the issue you'll find is, we met with them today, they were not done with their level of expectation on county roads until three days after the event started. So, yeah, we can call them in, but, you know, I think we got to, would have to wait in line. And then it's, you know, with those events, most of the frequent events, we're going to have warming weather and trends after that that wouldn't necessitate that response. We have what I'd say, within severe events, to kind of raise the emergency management protocols. And if we had like a severe blizzard coming in, was going to be a multi-day event, we're going to staff up the EOC. We're going to be in constant communication with us and public safety and the county EOC on, on how we're doing. And if we need additional resources, we kind of have the ability to enact mutual aid agreements for those severe events.
I, I think that the, the level of expectations for the county in their three days is, is much different than what we have in three days. I would assume that after three days, the county probably had every street completely dry as a bone, cleared, probably went back a second time to clear the driveways. I mean, I, I see, I, I drive on both county and city streets and, and there's, there's a section on 41st Street just west of the roundabout that I drive to my parents' house. And at the city limit line, I mean, I've taken photos of it, there's, I mean, it's, it's white on one side and black on the other. And what I would like to see is not necessarily that we, you know, enlist the county to do a lot of services, but what would be really nice is if they could go that extra hundred yards or two, or 200 yards and just make a circle around the roundabout before they head back up 41st Street. And, and things like that, I think, would just make common sense. And, and this is, nothing against you or the job that your folks do, because these are practices that have been in place for decades. And, and I think personally that it's time that we try and address some of those things.
Sure. And I agree with that. And I think that's part of why I'm trying to get some consensus from the body on what that level of service expectation is. Because I think a lot of it is perception. You know, we went through the RBI exercise with kind of the metro Kansas City counties. And what was interesting is they do, as part of that annual quality life survey, what's citizen satisfaction with residential plowing? And you can even go into the Johnson County area, Latha, Overland Park, and they're at 60, 67% satisfaction with residential effort. And so I think it's important for us to kind of, in order to give you good information, know what that overall level of service expectation. And we can definitely work with the county on those small things. I mean, we, we do that. But if there's a consensus effort of, of expanding beyond what that practice is, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Councilman Lester.
Just real quick, a couple of comments. One, one thing I'll let you off a little, a little bit off the hook as well, as someone who's lived in this community pretty much for my whole life, this county, county roads being better than city roads during snow hill has gone back to 1976, at least that I can remember, you know, being a kid and hearing the same thing. You know, that being said, I will say that, you know, I have had, you know, some of my staff who live outside, who, you know, in the county or, or even as far over as Dover and, you know, did make the comment on the last time that, that, you know, the roads were okay until they got to the city limits and then, 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 then they had issues. So that being the case, I will say this, though. I have, I have that most confidence in you. I see what you've done since you've been here with the, the pavement and the street conditions. And I truly believe if you decide to make this your priority and do that, that you're going to fix it and it's going to, going to, going to get done. And I, I truly have that confidence in you. And it is a difficult task because of where we are at located. I mean, it's, for us to completely stack, for us to completely purchase, you know, capital expenditures for all the equipment we need so we don't ever have to do this, can also end up being a depreciated asset that if you look at the last five years until this recent snowstorm, hasn't been that much snow that we've had. But I would implore you as, as well to, to, to talk with, you know, Councilman Emerson, who, whose company has done this too with the county, things that we can do this and how we can maybe come up with a plan. Because the one thing that, that, that we do have to be cognizant about, that, that Councilman Mays made a good point about is, you know, when, when schools are closed, especially that second day, people don't have sitters, kids get left alone. But there's a lot of our kids, too, that don't eat. You know, their meals come at school. And, and I know on that second day, I was at Boys and Girls Club for, for a meeting and it was, it was packed house and, and Dawn and her staff taking care of those people. And then the Seaman School District opened up Logan so, so kids could eat. And, and so, anyway, along those lines, I think coordination of making sure those school routes are cleared, so those people, goes a little bit further than just the educational purpose. So that's all I have.
Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to come back for a second time. So do we keep records of the complaints that come in? So, and, and the reason I ask that is I've got probably two neighborhoods that, you know, one, I have Burnett's mound in my district. And so, you know, there's, there's some pretty steep hills and I get, those two neighborhoods are where I get probably 90% of the phone calls from. Do you guys track that?
Yeah, so anything that gets called in is a service request that gets a response through our work order system. So we have a, a tracking of, of service requests by event.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Heller.
Just a quick thought. We had a new, I haven't, I don't really recall the numbers of complaints regarding school, school buses ever before. And it occurs to me as we talk that we had a new school bus service this year. Could that be part of what happened this particular time, maybe?
Yeah, it could be. I, you know, I don't really want to say that's the entire issue, but...
Understand.
...like, communication was a little different this time than previous events.
Well, just some relationships and experiences. I was listening to you talk about, you and you, I'm like, this is a new company.
Well, we met with the school district, you know, the week after, or during that event and the week after, just to say, hey, here's all the contact information, just make sure you have this. I mean, we've had that before, I don't know what changed this time, but...
But with the bus company as well?
To provide that through the school district to the bus company, yes.
All he wants for Christmas is some feedback.
I got it. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the last thing that I'd like to say is that Dr. Peak has been working hard trying to figure this out. He's met with me, talked with me about some of my expectations related to it. It's different for me, too. I mean, we look at different things that we did in Iowa compared to here. It's handled completely different. We've had discussions about different things that I've tried there. We're really turning over every rock in order to make sure that we look at all the different situations that might exist in order to be able to accomplish this. So looking forward to bringing something back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Peak. All right.
Turn these in.
He's like, look at him, he's smiling.
What?
I think I see a Christmas miracle. Next item is item B. If the clerk would read.
B is discussion regarding legislative priorities identified by the governing body to be addressed or monitored during the 2019 legislative session.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Whitney Dameron here today to present legislative priorities and discuss what he's proposing relative to those. Whitney?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, city manager, and, and members of staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk about 2019 legislative session that Councilman Mays and I are eagerly looking forward to. Interesting times as, as elections, as we know, have consequences and, and present opportunities as well. So looking forward to January 14th, when 2019 legislative session begins. Two days later, Governor Kelly will issue her State of the State address and we'll get her vision and the next day, her budget. I've sent some information over to the city, which I believe has been distributed last week. I appeared in front of the Shawnee County delegation, you were there, Mayor, as well as city manager Trout. Shawnee County delegation holds a meeting once a year in December and invites groups to come in and talk about the legislative session. And I believe you've seen a copy of the memorandum that I presented to them and, and what I talked about. I will highlight those things as well. First of all, kind of a broader picture on 2019 legislative session, what we're likely to see as a state and the legislature get into. K through 12 funding, the people who've been involved in that issue, talk about it in terms of, for the first time, there may be a light at the end of the tunnel. Depends on what the legislature does, obviously, but the last couple of years, we've seen literally hundreds of millions of dollars put into K through 12 in attempts to address Kansas Supreme Court decision on school finance. The number to close that gap, to, to bring that potentially to conclusion could be $100 million, more or less, as well as some kind of an inflation factor going forward based upon interpretation of the Kansas Supreme Court ruling. The Supreme Court never really comes out and says, if you pay X, this case will be dismissed. It's kind of a gray area that the legislature tries to determine exactly what the court means in terms of adequacy and equity and, and, but, but most people think that would get us there. House and Senate leadership said in the last week, they may not write that check, they may want to go back and revisit school finance and come up with a new formula. I doubt you, you find the kind of support to do that, but, but that threat is certainly out there. Expansion of Medicaid is a big issue. That, that bill has made it to the governor's desk two years ago in 2017. Governor Brownback vetoed that bill, the effort to override fell short. Efforts to get that bill back to the governor's desk last session failed. It likely comes back again. There will probably be maneuvers to try to keep that bill from getting to the governor's desk, but you probably don't need to override a governor's veto like you did in 2017. So if you can figure out 63 and 21 votes to get that bill to the governor, Governor -elect Kelly's indicated she would sign such a bill. So the opportunities will, will probably be there either to debate a bill and move it to the floor, or some kind of an amendment on a bill that gets to the floor that's germane. We're going to see state government reform, just because we're going to have new cabinet secretaries. Several agencies have been in the news of late, certainly because of the privatization of Medicaid issue, children and families, adoption and so forth. So we're going to see reorganization of state government because of a new administration coming in. We're going to see a transportation plan. As we've talked before, the state of Kansas has adopted 10-year comprehensive plans going back to '89, '99, and then 2010. The 2010 plan is set to expire essentially in 2019, 2020. There are 20 projects, 21 projects from that 2010 plan that have yet to be completed. So that was a big part of the review process with the Transportation Task Force that was created in, by the 2018 legislature and met around the state. So those recommendations will be finalized from that task force in January and serve as the basis of a transportation plan for consideration by the legislature next session. Last day of the 2018 legislative session, there was a bill referred to as the Make-A-Tax Bill that was held out, essentially about the second-to-last bill considered by the House before adjournment. That bill failed after essentially a call of the House for a couple of hours. That contains a number of tax components of interest to a variety of groups, but including some big corporations that have funds overseas that would like to repatriate those funds based upon the 2017 federal tax bill. There are some acceleration of some deductions for businesses and, and individual taxpayers, as well as a couple of relatively minor sales tax exemptions. That bill is likely to come back rather quickly in 2019, but it does have a fiscal note that's yet to be determined. Some suggest it could cost the state $125, $135 million if you pass that bill. Probably the biggest reason why it failed in 2018 is a number of legislators felt that the state just dug itself out from the hole that it was in financially by the passage of the tax bill in the previous session that, that rolled back a number of the, the tax cuts that, that were put in place in 2012 by, at the direction, or at the request of Governor Brownback. Unknown fiscal note exactly on what repatriation would cost and some of the other components. So they said, we need to find out what those numbers are. So I would foresee if that bill gets ratcheted back up quickly and sent to the governor, there's going to be some hesitancy to consider that, but she's going to want to have a clear picture on what the fiscal impacts on the state going forward and taking a look at what a current revenue stream looks like going forward and balancing that with, are you going to pay for school finance? Or are you going to pass something like this and tell me you can't pay for school finance now because we cut taxes again? So I think her priorities are going to be with resolving school finance before any significant tax bill is, is signed into law. Electric rates, that became a pretty hot issue this last legislative session. I think it's coming back next year, being driven primarily by big commercial and industrial rate payers who have expressed concerns that, that Kansas electric rates may be higher than surrounding states. I know the electric utilities talk about their reasons why we have those kinds of rates, transmission costs that have been developed to pay for, the movement of wind energy and so forth. So that's going to be a, probably a spirited debate in the legislative session, probably drive the Corporation Commission into it. They're in the process of doing some rate studies. KCPL and Westar is doing one as well based, because of their merger. And so we'll see that issue in the legislative process. And then sports wagering is probably likely to be the gaming issue next session instead of slots at tracks. That's the broad picture. Coming back to city of Topeka issues that we talked about with the delegation that I have visited with the city manager's office, there was some discussions several months ago from the city manager's office about community improvement districts and the interest of perhaps a developer in seeking some kind of an expansion of the authority under a CID to bring in liquor sales. Those currently are not allowed because they are an excise tax, not a sales tax. I provided the city manager's office with a memorandum on that about three weeks ago and talked about some of the things I'm hearing when I went out and talked to some other parties of interest, some other municipalities, as well as some people who, who are in that space, the liquor industry in particular, and the developer side, and some of the pitfalls of that particular legislation should either the city or the developer like to go down that path. Transportation plan, I know the city has been certainly considering some transportation issues, whether it's the transit authority and their request for some additional funding, or the I-70 viaduct bridge and trying to get some additional funds back to urban areas. I know the Transportation Task Force seemed receptive to increasing funding for transit, for short-line rail, for aircraft, airports authorities, relatively minor part of the transportation plan. It was like $11 million in the 2010 plan. The request has been to increase that to $23 million. So it's not a major amount of money when, when looked at the entire spectrum of a transportation plan. The last plan was like $8.5 billion, so that's a relatively small amount. But if funding there increases, the city of Topeka would receive a proportionate increase as well. I believe there are six urban districts that receive money out of that, as well as the non-urban people who receive funding from that. The abandoned housing issue, I know in visiting with city manager's office, we have hit significant resistance to that, at least in one chamber, the Senate. That resistance has not left the legislative process. That resistance has not left the legislative process. I know that issue remains a priority of members of the council and the city. It's something that may be a challenge to work around that leadership we have in the Senate. Being a new legislative session, a new legislature being sworn in, all bills that were in existence in 2018 and previous go away, so we start the session anew. And so it would require bringing a new piece of legislation forward. I will visit with the people who have expressed support in that legislation, both the House and the Senate chairs, certainly take direction from the City Manager's Office and this chamber, as to whether that is an action priority of something we want to seek, bringing a piece of legislation forward. As we've talked about before, as you saw earlier in your presentation today, the cooperation between the city and the county on that subject, figuring out ways to do things without asking the legislature for permission is generally easier and more productive than waiting on them to grant that authority. But that said, I know the Shawnee County delegation, when we met with them, said they would hope the city would continue to press for that. They still see interest and merit, so there could be some opportunities in working with both the House and the Senate people that are interested in that issue going forward. One other thing that has kind of come up recently is the alternative transportation devices, and you've probably had some internal discussion on that, and whether we see some of those means of transportation show up in the City of Topeka or other cities. Some years ago, when a device called the Segway was invented, it was going to change the world, as I remember the way it was advertised from the inventor. So there were cities that had restrictions on running segways on sidewalks, and so there was legislation to essentially preempt cities from regulating segways on sidewalks, and it ultimately achieved a compromise. And I think you had similar challenges or potential issues with these other kinds of transportation devices, and at least one of them does have Governmental Affairs Council, and you could see a bill. And so if something like that comes up, that may be something the city would like to react to. So I've also included, when I sent information over to the city, what the legislative agenda was of the League of Kansas Municipalities, as well as Kansas Association of Counties. It's not probably cutting new ground or carving out new major issues that they're looking to get into. We've generally seen them before. They've asked for, in the past, some kind of amendments to the tax lid in regard to the timing of submission of budgets. Some cities, that's an issue, some that's not. I think in visiting with the City of Topeka, it has not been a significant issue, at least it's something that could be overcome. There was a Supreme Court decision in the last year in regard to internet sales tax. There's been legislation on that. Some legislation on tax bills tried to tie certain changes in our state tax law to whether the Supreme Court repealed or reversed the Quill decision out of South Dakota on that subject. Those bills did not pass. That issue likely will be revisited. It kind of remains to be seen, does the state of Kansas really need to pass legislation, or does the Department of Revenue merely need to enforce laws that are on the books in regard to the assessment of taxation? So there will be, I'm sure, some updates before the House and the Senate Tax Committees early in the session, what that decision means for Kansas. Is tax policy going to change? What impact that has on local units of government and their ability to make sure that taxes are paid down at the local level as well? And then the alternative property tax issue, the dark store issue, how do you tax buildings that are vacant? Big-box retailers versus those that are not. Right now, it's a Johnson County issue, it's a Board of Tax Appeals issue, it very likely becomes a Court of Appeals, Kansas Supreme Court issue, and then it might again become a Kansas legislative issue. So we could see some legislation on that, but by and large, when things like that are being litigated, they generally want to see what happens in the Court of Tax Appeals or in the courts before they really start making radical change to state tax policy in that regard. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions. You all, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm asking you to read the tea leaves, as I do every year. Given that federal tax law, Kansas tax law is generally tied to federal tax law within terms of income tax and that sort of thing, Kansas tax law, I would assume, would go down because federal does. Do you foresee the attempt of Kansas to raise taxes back to where it was before, if not exceed that?
No, I don't see any serious efforts to increase taxes next year. I think Governor-elect Kelly has said she would not raise taxes. You get kind of caught up in the weeds on that. Is a fee a tax? If you're looking at a transportation plan, is an increase in motor fuels, registration, or titles, is that a tax increase? Well, it depends on whether you're opposed to it or in favor of it. I would not anticipate Governor Kelly and her State of the State asking for any increases like that. She is fortunate in that the heavy lifting there was done in 2017 with the change of the tax law. It's generally hit the numbers, if not exceeded slightly, what the projections were. The state does a better job of forecasting revenues versus expenditures, and she will have the luxury of coming in with a state that's in the black. And so I think she, at least for the foreseeable future, will be able to live up to that promise without...
And you don't see that significantly changing, even with the new federal tax code?
You know, one issue on the tax code is, I think, the way they... Let me get off path here just a little bit, but the way the federal tax bill was passed in 2017, increased the standard deduction, it made it to where you would not see a benefit by itemizing your taxes in Kansas because you wouldn't be able to claim certain exemptions. And that has been part of the tax bill to decouple from the federal tax code in regard to that, to allow Kansas taxpayers to continue to itemize, but not itemize on your federal, which is before, I think it was, if you did not itemize on the federal, you couldn't itemize on the state.
Correct.
I've told you more than I know about tax law.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Whitney, I've heard of just some talk about the food tax. Kind of keep your radar on that. You think it'll, you know, pass, or has there been any talk about it?
That issue, I think, will be talked about probably for the next couple of years. Governor-elect Kelly has said, yes, she would like to see that moved down. We have one of the highest, if not the highest, sales tax on food in the country. The state of Missouri, I believe, levies a local sales tax, not a state sales tax, for example. She has said, I believe, in media accounts, that that is a priority, but she wants to see the state budget stabilized first. Historically, or at least in recent history, the last six to eight years, coming in with Governor Brownback's administration, they've done a two-year budget. And so 2018, they're going to be working on a two-year budget. I think if you can get some out years, like in the 2019, or, excuse me, 2020, 2021, and start seeing that revenues continue to come in, that you will see an effort to start trying to bring down the state sales tax on food. But I would not see that recommended or seriously considered in 2019. I don't think you'd see that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
I have a short list. We have really been addressing some issues just in the last couple of weeks, and I don't know if we need state action, but I just want to address a couple that we've been dealing with before and then list them. One, I really do think we need to drop the tax lid. Obviously, we had an issue that was on our agenda tonight that was causing us a great deal of angst and transit, because that was an arbitrary thing that I don't think they thought through. And so I certainly hope that we, as a city, strongly support that effort on behalf of everyone. I also do agree with dropping Pursuit of the Abandoned Housing Right bill right now. We've had some conversations on it over the years. At this point, what we've been asking for is so narrowly defined that it wouldn't necessarily get us much, even if it were passed. And I think the kinds of things that we heard tonight about approaching some different ways to use the laws that we have, I mean, even looking at the turnaround on a tax sale being a one in two years that we haven't talked about for vacant properties or for commercial, we haven't tried to work that system. And with the partnership that we've got going with the county and neighborhood relations now, I think that those are better ways for us to spend our time right now. The new ones that I would suggest would be, if we need it, exploring whether the BID fees could be assessed on government occupied properties and residential properties. Right now, we are not doing that, and our downtown is cleaning sidewalks and supporting a plaza and doing all sorts of things that are attracting those workers and those residents downtown. I'm not saying it needs to be full price, but, you know, part of the reason that our prior state administration wanted to move the state offices into private buildings was, so we got the money out of that, yet we're not getting BID, and I'd like to look into both of those for our downtown. Second, you mentioned, I don't know, alternate vehicles or something, but we've been approached by Bird, and the issue of electric scooters is pending for us. My understanding is that in other locales, anyway, part of the catch-22 has been people don't want them on the sidewalk, but they're not legal on the street. So in anticipation of that, if that is an issue that we should look into and then discuss and pursue this session, I wanted to at least suggest it... This is a copy of just my short list for you guys and for Brenda. Third, the legislative agenda that we have attached talks about looking at alternative appraisal and valuation approaches for commercial properties. Some of us, anyway, have really run into that same issue in our neighborhoods. I personally have been very concerned about revenue for the city, and we've been talking about it and have, I think I've mentioned, have had some, asked some questions and have had some great conversations with our appraiser. But if there are some, our values in our neighborhoods, despite our investments of $1.5 million a year and our belief that if we just build a new house or do, through Habitat or Cornerstone, that the rate, that the appraisals in the neighborhood will go up, it's not happening right now. And so looking into that, and then if there is something about how we do residential neighborhood appraisals that could improve, we may need to just improve what we're doing in terms of investments here. But at the same time, since we're going into the session, if there's something there about residential, I'd like to see us look at it, if it's a fit. And then the last one that I have, I'm chairing the Policy and Finance Committee right now, and we're talking about the residency requirements and so on. And in the course of our meeting a couple of weeks ago, Chief Duke mentioned that in the Kansas City metro area, which turns out to be true in St. Louis as well, Missouri state law, they are able to charge a 1% income tax for people who do not reside in that city. And we have, people have tried that before in Kansas, as I understand it, but both for us cities of the first class, as well as the small towns where people are commuting in from all over the place, but using the streets and so on, I think it could really help us if we could look into that. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hiller. Additional comments from the body?
Mayor, if I could, I'd just make one comment on the property tax lid and transportation. There were a number of people who suggested to that Transportation Task Force that the tax lid restricted cities and counties from being able to do some things that are needed with infrastructure, because the state's doing less. One of the things that we may see come out of that transportation proposal is some kind of an exemption to local units of government on transportation infrastructure out from under the tax lid, and that may be if you had a local match to state and federal money, that that local match would be outside from the tax lid or something like that. So there was some discussion on that, that tweak to the tax lid law.
Councilwoman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Whitney, are you all right dropping the abandoned property bill? I know you've had a lot of fun with that over the last few years. I'm just joking. In all seriousness, though, my real question is about the docking building. Has the state of Kansas ever consulted the city on the fate of that building at all?
You know, it's kind of, we have had discussions. It has been prior to City Manager Trout coming on board, but it was some years ago with City Manager Colson, and we had met with the state of Kansas about that. I think it's just been sitting there in abeyance because the state hasn't had the money to do anything with it. They practically cleared it out, with the exception of storage and maybe one small agency or outpost of state employees, I'm unsure. And, you know, I think having a governor that comes from the City of Topeka, who's been the ranking member of the Senate Committee on Ways and Means, who understands the pressure of local units of government, who understands the abandoned housing issue, who understands, you know, some of the challenges the City of Topeka faces, I think provides greater opportunity on the abandoned housing issue, but also someone who has been involved with consideration of what to do with docking and how to pay for it, whether the building comes down, whether the building partially comes down, or how to repurpose the building or the property. So I think it would be appropriate to reengage the governor and her Department of Administration when she is back in, when she is in office, about what are your plans for docking and how can the City of Topeka be involved with that.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, Whitney, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
It was great to hang out with you the other day.
Welcome anytime. The people's building.
So the last item on the agenda is Item C. If the clerk would read.
C is Discussion on the Proposed Revisions to Governing Body Rules and Procedures.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Robertson has been working with various people related to the changes that were discussed, and I'll let her go through what she has done as far as redrafting this. We brought it back as a discussion again so that we could look at these changes, and then if we can get them to a final point, then we'll put them back before you for final approval.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and City Council members. As you'll recall, we've talked about this at length last Tuesday. I took some notes and hopefully got a lot of what you recommended and wished for reflected in the second draft that you should have received last week. So what I did this go-around was to take the most recent revisions and try to highlight those in yellow so that you could see what was changed. And the first one, unfortunately, was not highlighted, but it's on page nine. If you all have your Red Line document, we'll kind of go through the same song and dance. If you have your Red Line document on page nine, on line 348, there was an addition for an extra public comment period to be closer to the beginning of the meeting. We placed it after roll call. And there was discussion about perhaps limiting the period of time that we allow for public comment in that first period to one hour. I heard some other numbers thrown out, so if there's any further discussion on that, feel free, but right now, I placed it at one hour.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. As I sat at home last week, and I just came, I heard a lot of discussion, and I didn't, I requested a copy and I didn't get a copy of yours, so I'll try to follow along here. I don't like that we're going to lot for an hour before the meeting and then even have so many slots. And I tell you why, is because somebody's going to feel like, oh, well, they just give them the slots and not us the slots, you know? It's going to be kind of that mentality, east-west or whatever. I was sitting here kind of thinking about this. I mean, we've done it several ways, and we're here to conduct business. And if anything, let's look at maybe before the non-action items, maybe moving it there, you know, so they don't have to sit around for all of this. But I think when we say, well, let's just have five slots, you know, to the first five people that call or fill out whatever, I just don't like that, because I think people are going to think that we're favoring people. You know, maybe I put five people that are for an item, and then the five people that are against the item at the end. I mean, we don't have any idea of what they're going to talk about, but I could just see us being ridiculed for that. As far as changing the time, I really like the time, and I think that... As far as changing the time, I really like the time, and I think that gives us an extension if we need it because it kinda, you know, I see people that come up here all the time, and what they do is they take a good 30 to a minute, seconds to a minute, you know, talking about how unjustified they've been instead of just pleading their case. So that kinda, kinda helps them to kinda, you know, get in there. Now, I do feel sorry for, you know, some of the elderly that are people that are upset and they get, and they start reading, and they just, they just can't do it fast enough because they're nervous or something. So you know, I kinda like that. But I, I would just like to see us keep it the same or maybe look at that. But I just think people are gonna think we're picking and choosing, even though we're not, who's gonna be in the front, who's gonna be at the bottom. And you know, we're here to conduct business. That's what they know that we're here to do. And again, just educating the public. Some people don't know that they have to sign up. Some people don't, don't know that there's an option or whatever, and I think that just keeps us, keeps us steady and across the board. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
Yeah, I thought about this too. I'm afraid if we give the hour and so many slots, we don't get to hear everybody, and that's my concern. So we have, if we had 10 slots and 12 people showed up, we don't get to hear those two people. So, and I think everybody does need the opportunity to be heard, and I think that cuts some of those people off.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have not been on the council as long as some people, but if we take 60 minutes and divide that by four minutes, that's 15 slots. And I can't recall when we've ever had more than 15 people sign up for public comment. So especially if it's, if it's public and it's on a first-come, first-serve basis, the first 15 people have the option to speak before, everybody else has to speak at the end, you still have the option to speak, and it's first-come, first-serve. So the people that actually planned ahead and called and requested a slot, you know, it's first right of refusal, so they would have the option to speak first. They could also call and request at the end, but like I say, I don't, I don't ever remember having more than 15 people signed up to speak. So I really don't see where an hour limit, which is incredibly gracious in my opinion, is not enough to give people plenty of time and options. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lussar.
Am I missing something? But do we not still have the public comment at the end of the meeting as well?
You're correct, Councilmember Lussar.
So it becomes that, I mean, there's not, nobody's gonna not be able to talk. We're just eliminating the amount of time at the beginning, isn't that correct?
Correct.
We can go for four hours at the end, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
So then what's the point? So then why would you put a time limit if everybody can talk anyway? But like Councilmember Jensen said, if we've never had that many people, then why even put it in there? I mean, do we think we're gonna have that many people? I mean, it worked when we did that for a while, and we had, you know, people talk before and after a few people. It worked then. So I don't know why we need to mess with it, just leave it like it was, because I think it worked then.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could answer, I think the intent of setting a maximum time limit before the meeting, for one thing, is to be respectful to all the other folks who've shown up at the meeting to hear the content of the actual meeting, and then so that we don't spend hours and hours before we start to, you know, what we're actually here to do outside of listening to public feedback. So it basically sets the maximum amount of time before we would get into the agenda items. Like I say, I've never seen us have 60 minutes of comments, even on some of the biggest issues. But again, I've not been here that long, so.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, it just depends on what you're talking about. I can remember Mayor Button, and what he would do is we'd have 20 people signed up one night, and he'd say, one, two, three, followed by these three, and they'd line up, move it on. So we've heard, it just depends on what the issue is and what people are compassionate about. But if you stick around long enough, you'll get there. You'll get there. I just don't want people to think that we're being unfair to somebody, you know? Again, these are our rules. If we know, we can always make special preparations or, you know, if we know that there's a guy that he needs to speak and he's an elderly guy, we can suspend the rules, am I right?
Correct.
We can always do that. But I think to have an agenda so people know to follow that agenda is very important, you know? But I just don't want to be accused of, well, all the men got to go first and then the women had to wait, and that's how they signed up. And I did like the fact that, I don't know if we're still doing it, that you could sign up at the meeting.
Yes.
I do like that because some people, they get here, they might be off the, they might be off the list. The clerk might have accidentally done it, not Brenda, of course, but, you know, or maybe they called the wrong office, or make, anything could happen. So I do like that, but an agenda is where we're going. We're here to conduct business. We do want to hear our constituents, but you know, like I said, I thought even before non-action items, it brings us closer to the, to the end if we want to look at something, something like that. But we can always suspend the rules to put public comment or to place whoever, but stick around, you'll, you'll, you'll get a topic.
Additional comments or questions? Yes, Councilwoman Hiller.
I appreciate these comments. You know, we did that test run, and it seemed like it wasn't that urgent. I remember visiting with some of the people and they, that waited till the end, and they said that, that's okay, that they understood. One of the conversations we had when we debated doing that was the fact that if we put all those last-minute signups in the front of the meeting, then the people who were coming for the scheduled agenda items would have to wait an hour and a half possibly before item number two came up on the agenda. And so I recall of this body some mixed feelings about that. I haven't been sure how it would be equitable either, so I was just interested in maybe if we just leave it at the end, but have something on the sign up that says if you have an urgent need to get out early, let us know. We don't want to attract 20 people to sign up for various issues that we didn't get before just because they can get on and take over the meeting too. I mean, we had that kind, I just have mixed feelings about it because I want it to work, and I do want people to understand it. But if it were, if it were just that we have, that there's an option in the sign up that if you have an urgent need to let us know, and we could possibly get you in a slot earlier, that's different than having a whole hour of four-minute folks coming up and down.
Councilwoman Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we could come up with a whole lot of reasons to not make any changes at all and just keep doing things the way we are. But I think this is something that we ought to give it a try and just make a decision, whether it's an hour, whether there's no limit, whether we keep it to five people. I think we just need to make a decision, and then in a year we come back and visit it, I think the odds of us getting more than one night where we have 20 or 30 people show up to talk and delay us from doing our business is relatively slim. And if, and if we get to a night where that happens, there's probably a reason for it. And it's probably gonna be our fault in some way. I also wanted to address one other thing which we haven't really talked about, and perhaps this is just curiosity on my part, but Lisa, in terms of the order of the agenda, is there a reason why the presentations are done before roll call and appointments?
I'm not aware of any, Councilmember Mace. You?
I do. We used to, whenever we had work sessions, those happened at 5:00. So we would have our work sessions before, Councilwoman Hiller is smiling because she remembers those days, we would have our work sessions at 5:00, and then we would engage in the business of the body at 6:00. What happened was, we decided a while back, I think we were doing one of these reviews, to take a look at condensing and just saying, we will have that at the first part of the meeting because they're not really like agenda items. We're just having a conversation with regards to a presentation of something that we want to be informed about. Typically, those would have happened outside of the meeting anyway, but they were capitalizing on the fact that we were all together, and then we get into the business of the council. So that's probably why that order was set the way it is.
Okay. Just from a personal, thank you, Mayor, from a personal standpoint, I think I would kind of like to see them change, push back just a little bit to, I feel like sometimes those presentations get very lengthy, and I know that we're working on limiting them to eight minutes, and that would be fantastic. I just don't see how we can get all of them done in eight minutes. Sometimes they, they go long, and I think if, if at least we could get our roll call and, and then get our appointments made so that the folks who are just here to stand up and wave at us can get on with their nights, I think it might be just a nice thing to do for those folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Mayor.
That's an interesting point, because if you look at, you know, what is a presentation versus a non-action item, you know, we had two presentations this evening, and then Dr. Pete gave us an excellent presentation in a non-action item. So to some degree, what is the real difference? They were both presentations.
The big difference is that presentations don't have to be items for the council. Presentations could be Shawnee County coming and doing a presentation.
Is that a presentation?
It's a presentation.
Right.
And it's from the community to us.
What was the difference between what Dr. Pete gave versus what the Shawnee County clerk gave?
It will eventually lead to a business decision for this body.
So we won't take any business decision on property at all in the city?
It's, it's a different, it's a different concept. So the non-action items are things that we will discuss that eventually will lead to a decision from this body. The presentations are solely an opportunity for us to maybe engage members of the community to talk to us about things that are important to them that may not turn into
Right.
an agenda item.
My point though is it doesn't have to be that way, and it's not always that way. Sometimes we do make business decisions out of presentations later on, so perhaps it's best to just put them on to action items, or not, I'm sorry, non-action items, and then review them that way.
City manager.
From, from my standpoint, the way I view presentations versus discussion is we aren't necessarily looking for an engagement of a discussion with a presentation. If there were no questions whatsoever, that's all right. We're there simply to present information, not to necessarily enter into a dialogue regarding the item. There isn't a, we're not seeking your input on what we're doing in a presentation versus a discussion, we typically are, which if you look at it, as we went through our agenda review process, we made the decision that we wanted to move the snow and ice discussion item to a discussion versus a presentation. Last time, it was a presentation. Dr. Pete simply stood before us, told us what our process is, and that was the end of it, not necessarily looking for feedback and input. And based on what we were doing tonight, we sought that feedback, and so that's why we moved it to as a discussion item. And so that's how I view items and where I choose to place them on the agenda. Presentations, if there was no feedback or questions, there isn't, we're not seeking that per se.
Councilwoman Claire.
Since we're talking about presentations, and I know, I know this wasn't approved and that once tonight went longer than eight minutes, but are we gonna have a buzzer where it beefs for eight minutes? You will?
Yeah, ten minutes for me to have the clock run.
And then you will actually tell them and stop them, it won't be like tonight, they just go on anyway?
Well, it's gonna sum up, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yes, City manager.
Yes, we would ask, we would ask them to sum up and finish.
Councilwoman Hiller to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Two things from this conversation. As we talk about the time for if we were gonna do public comment earlier, I think if we said 30 minutes, people would self-select a little bit differently, and it would be better management for us, so I would throw that out for consideration. On the other, it's real interesting, I mean, all due respect, I think the only way to split them would be that presentations would be things that City Manager and Mayor didn't think would take more than eight minutes, and discussion items would be anything that we expect much discussion, whether it's just informative or whether it's an issue. One of the things about setting up the non-action items was so that we could float issues, and maybe they never go anywhere, which is something that was still accommodating, but that's, it's an opportunity for us to literally just have discussion and just, and if there's really no interest or people don't want to do it, to let, to say, okay, discussion over, end of sub chat, we're not going back also. So I think we felt a little compelled that if it got to the agenda at all, it needed to go somewhere, and really, we don't need to. So I could, I could see it just based on time.
Okay. Lisa?
So what I've taken from this, then, just want to make sure I have this correct, we want to keep the public comment period, one period in the beginning, but we'll shorten the timeframe.
Councilwoman Mace.
So I came up with some, just now listening to Councilwoman Hiller, perhaps, you know, we've had some debate as to whether or not we can extend public comment. What if we made the, the public comment at the beginning non-extendable, and then the ones at the end we can extend? I mean, I don't know, just, just a thought to maybe expedite things.
The concern that I have with that, Councilman, is the fact that if we do that, there is still gonna be the occasion of having a person that you see that is having a difficult time expressing themselves, and I assure you, I assure you, it will be extended. So it would be setting us up for a rule that we won't be able to follow.
Just realistic. Because we could suspend the rules even if we had a mandatory four minutes.
Yeah. Councilwoman Lussar.
Back to line 351, based on when I'm hearing the lack of consensus, I would recommend that we leave public comment as it is currently. Thank you.
So then if we moved on to page 10, we look at line 379. Oh, I'm sorry, was there another?
Councilwoman Ortiz, sorry. I'm sorry?
I was followed by who?
Oh, gosh. Councilwoman Ortiz, pardon me.
Well, that's okay, Mayor. It happens. I'm always followed by somebody. I wanna, I wanna come back and talk about presentations, and we're trying to limit it to eight, eight minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I don't like that. I mean, look at what happened tonight, and it was very good discussion. I think we could start that out, but Brett, you took about 25 minutes, so we don't tell you. I mean, poor little Nick was trying to hurry up and get back to the wall. It was like, I mean, and it was all good stuff. It was all good stuff. I think if we tell them, you know, we really like to limit our presentations to eight minutes and kind of give them a guide, but you, you took eight minutes and then the rest of crew was frightened, you know? So what are we gonna do about that? Are we gonna extend, extend, extend? Again, they're gonna say, well, you guys let the city people take, what was it, 23? I thought you timed it, 25 minutes? And then the first presentation, that was even over eight minutes. But they were both very good presentations. I think when we start limiting them, are we gonna miss out on something that they could have put? I'm not saying, say, 20 minutes, I'm just saying, you know, we'd really like to limit it, it's, you know, but what happens when we don't? And we got the bell going off, saying, you know, you need to wrap it up and sit down? I mean, we didn't tell you that, Brett, we didn't tell you that.
City manager.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz. Yeah, when we look at these types of situations, I agree, sometimes there are items that it's hard to get in eight minutes. However, there is a difference. If we have people with a clock, that they know they have so much time to speak, they will practice and they will be prepared, and that's what we're really after, whether it's eight minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, whatever, you guys. I'm trying to look at ways that when people come to make presentations to you, that they're distinct, and they're giving you what you need for information, and they're not going on longer than necessary for you to understand what they're, what they're presenting to you, and that's the purpose. If you want to pick a different number than eight minutes, I've just, I've used eight minutes in the past, and if you really work on it, you can. Most of the time, we were done, they were done within the eight-minute timeframe, so.
And I can appreciate that, and I think the mayor has the opportunity to ask them, you know, to kind of finalize it. know, to kind of finalize it and stuff like that, but I, I'm just, I just don't want to miss out on something that, you know, they're right here, we don't want them coming back for another eight minutes.
Councilwoman Ortiz, also, I have seen eight-minute presentations and then 20-minute question and answer sessions after presentation.
Right.
And so if there is information that you can't get to within the eight minutes, there'll often be questions that will pull that information out and get, dig deeper. The idea is to begin to scratch the surface of a particular idea, present the basics about a particular present issue and then if there are more questions and you acquire more information, you then have the opportunity to ask questions and dig deeper on those things you might be interested in.
And I, and I think that's very important that, I'm glad you said that, because a lot of times, oh, the lady from Shawnee County, I was writing down her number and then it just flew off the screen. So whatever they give to us for a presentation, if that's, make sure that that's on there, their name and number on everything, I think that's helpful along with the page numbers to whoever presents, that's very, very helpful. And then if they can just hand it to the clerk as opposed to try, I see people try to hand it out and that takes time, you know, as opposed to getting started, so that was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. You could go move on.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try to finish this in eight minutes, Mayor. Okay. So I've got a couple of title changes that I received, some comments from Councilmember Hiller after the meeting. One is on line 379 and the other is on line 381, I believe. It's 5.5, the titles to that actual section. Right now it reads opportunities to present information or make public comment and Councilmember Hiller suggested that perhaps that be changed to presentations and public comment. Does that more accurately reflects kind of what we're talking about in that section? And then subsection A currently reads placement on agenda, time limitation, presentations. And the next one is sign up, time limitation for public comment. She suggested perhaps we just do time limitation for presentations and time limitation for public comment for those titles. I don't know that, I mean, if that's fine with you all, then I'll keep moving. Subsection A, this is, there were some revisions in this particular subsection A1 on lines 379 to 383. This is one that I heard from Councilmember Hiller just recently. She suggested perhaps just deleting that whole subsection A1 as it relates to preparing the agenda and this relates more to public comment and presentations. And then in subsection 2, in addition to the yellow highlighted language that was deleted and added, she suggested perhaps adding any individuals making a presentation to the governing body, then adding under the presentation section of the agenda will be limited to eight minutes. The next would be where I think we switched, oh, the three options for public comment. That's on page 11, that's subsection B4. I really didn't get a good consensus on where everyone was standing on that, so I just threw three options out there. One is four-minute public comment with extensions granted with a two-third vote. Another option is four minutes for public comment with extensions not to exceed a total of four minutes, so it'd be a total of eight minutes for each person to speak if they wished. And then the third one was a five-minute public comment period with no extension. I'm not really sure where the body falls on that, so I just threw all three of them out there and you can decide which one makes sense.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I like the four minutes and I like it kind of like, sometimes I feel like we ask them how much more time do they need and some of them will say four minutes or three minutes or two minutes. So we're all around the clock, but usually when I extend, I just say another two minutes or, you know, you can kind of tell, but I, I like the four minutes. I know my colleagues will probably hate me because I don't like change, but I like the four minutes with our opportunity for us to say how many minutes we want to extend because if we give them four more minutes, they're going to, they're going to ask for an extension, they're going to want it and that's, that's eight minutes and you get eight times 10, there you go.
All right. Councilwoman Claire.
Ditto. I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Next is the switch from what used to be Rule 9, Rules of Decorum, it's called Citizen Input right now, and we took it from Rule 9 and placed it all into Rule 5 because that's a better placement for it. Really it's dealing with how you behave yourself while you give public comment and presentation and so I think this is more appropriate and I believe Deputy Mayor Jensen suggested that change.
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Was there the change, a warning that they, to take out the warning? Did I read that? When somebody's getting belligerent, that the, to have them just removed? I thought I read that. Because I like the way that we give a warning, that the mayor's able to give a warning if they're getting out of hand.
It's in there.
It's still in there?
It is still in there.
485.
So if they're, if they're getting out of hand, then you give a warning, then the second time you can have them removed? Okay. Okay. Somewhere I thought it was just to take out the warning part.
No, it's still.
And again, I think people don't really understand and sometimes they do, but most of the time what I've seen is when you give them a warning, they'll calm down or do what you asked them to do. Thank you.
And then the next would be on page 13. We had previously on lines 5, 14 to 525 suggested that that whole subsection A be taken out and Councilmember Hiller suggested that perhaps we add in motions may be either affirmative or negative and leave it at that. And then we added in, or the city clerk, as you all wished from the last meeting. And then the last thing, I believe.
Quick question. Yes, Councilwoman.
Back up in 6.1, there was some discussion about the governing, regarding questions related to items, the governing body shall direct questions to the city manager and I thought there was discussion that those could be directed to the mayor. Because usually we direct them to you and then you ping them out and I, I thought we talked about that and I didn't see it. Was that purposeful?
No, I don't recall that. That must have just been something I missed in the discussion, so thank you for bringing that up, making that back in. Thank you. Okay, so then we skip over to page 20, I believe, and that is where we talked about amendment of the rules. It's the very, very last rule. The item that I, or the, the change that I got from our discussion last week was to add amendment on at least an annual basis. And then I heard from Councilmember Hiller and she has a couple of proposals to kind of expand on that language if the body wishes to do that. So I was going to let her go through those if she.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Okay. On the handout that came, came around during our discussion, those changes are on the There was a concern at first because somehow when the staff presented us this section nine, what's now 9.2, the first time, it said the rules shall be amended and, and that was an error and it should be, the rules may be amended, that was their intent. So we got that covered. The issue then, so you, you see that language in the first section. I looked at it in two ways. One was if we, apparently something has emerged that people want to review these annually. I'm really not sure we need to do them annually, so the first option is annual and the second one is periodically as somebody would want to do it. I added some more language into the annual one, which is the middle one, simply because we seem to miss these things that are supposed to happen on a routine basis or we're not sure who's responsible for it and it just kind of gets mushed around. So if we were going to do it annually, my suggestion in that middle one is that we make it clear that the review is to be initiated by staff, that it's to be done in the fourth quarter of each year and should reflect on the experience of the prior year, that governing bodies, members may be engaged for consultation as needed, that the report would be made on or before the first meeting in December, so there is a goal in there, and that if new changes, if changes or new rules are proposed, then the standard rules for agenda posting, consideration and referral to committee would apply. Not nothing special and different could be referred to committee, needs to be on a week in advance, all those kinds of things would be the same. And then the voting as, as the staff has put in prior. The last one is if we don't want it annual, then to really simplify it and just say the rules should be reviewed on a periodic basis. Review could be initiated by staff or the governing body members. If changes or new rules are proposed, standard rules, blah, blah, blah. So I just played with the language for either way.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the, the second proposal that we do it on a periodic basis. Like you, Councilwoman Hiller, I don't think it's necessary to do this on a yearly basis. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
These are our rules and we can bring them forth anytime we want to, am I correct?
Correct.
So if anybody wants, gets on the council and they want to go over the rules or change the rules, we can do that. I too like the second one. I think it's a waste of time to do it every year. We don't even follow the rule. What rule is that? The rule that we don't follow? Let's take that one out. Well, we don't even acknowledge the chair. We just go to talking. What rule is that, Mayor? I'm serious. Let's take that one out. I mean, we can do what, these are our rules, whatever we want. I was just stunned that we're looking at them. Okay, we looked at them, we cleaned them up, we should be happy, we need to get on to business. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for recognizing me, Madam Chair. My only question in jest.
Thank you for recognizing me, Deputy Mayor.
You know, I do what I can for you, my liege. My only question is, so if we, if we do change the rules so that they're periodically reviewed, does there need to be a formal process for somebody to quote-unquote "regular review" or do you just ask the city manager to place an item on the agenda that says we'd like to review them?
Mm-hmm.
And then we should probably write that down because we always seem to forget exactly what the process is.
It says it in there. Review may be initiated by staff if they observe that we, they think we need something or.
Karen, acknowledge the chair. Sorry, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I worked on that language to say it could be initiated by staff or by a governing body member and that if they're proposed, the standard rules of procedure would, would follow. So getting it on an agenda, all those things.
So from what I'm hearing, everybody agrees that, we have it written here, it's on the second option, Lisa, I mean, City Attorney.
Yeah.
And, and it seems like everybody is in agreement. We don't have to do this every single year. However, I still believe that rather than sending this to committee, it was important for everybody to be part of this because this is our rules. These are our rules. So thank you so much for your work. We look forward to whatever you find is the right way of writing everything that we had in consensus.
Mayor, would you like me to put this on the agenda as a discussion item next?
I'm looking forward for this to being an action item.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. She has gone over her eight minutes.
At this point in time, there are no other items in the agenda except for the announcement and there's no announcement on the city clerk because we don't have a meeting until next year. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The only announcement I have is the last Coffee on Your Corner session will be held on December 19th tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the McDonald's on 5525 Southwest 21st Street. The topic will be the Common Unity Program.
Well, this is our last meeting of the year. Wow. We've been a year together. It's been awesome working with each and every one of you. I want to say thank you to the volunteer committee that works on the community things. If you guys have a chance and you go to the Michelle for Topeka page on Facebook, you'll get a chance to hear a podcast in which all of them had a chance to talk about their experience for this year and we're already on gears to see what we're going to do for next year. This has been a very exciting year with a lot of great things happening. I really feel that we have a top-notch body of the council. I want to wish everybody a Happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and all the celebrations. And I will remind all of you again, I just recently heard of a tragedy, several tragedies that are happening of suicide here in Topeka and, and I don't, I don't think it, it hurts to reinforce the fact that we all should be our brother and our sister's keepers and that we should try during this time to take a look at what's happening with people around us. I mean, sometimes people really put a great front that everything is okay, but guys, the season is hard. I mean, the sun doesn't shine as much, we don't have a chance to produce enough serotonin, there's families that are displaced and these are times that we remember the people that we lost and these are very hard times. So as we are celebrating the love and the joy that we have amongst our families, let's also remember that it's not a great season for every single person and let's do our part to make it a little special for every single person that we have around us. I wish you all a wonderful holiday. Councilman Mace.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I wanted to just also wish, echo your voice there and wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, all of that, and then also thank the mayor and her friends for stopping by my house. I think they also stopped by several other people's houses as well. It was quite a surprise and I'm glad that I was wearing decent clothes and had shoes on and all that, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Mayor, thank you. Merry Christmas. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lesser.
Merry Christmas, first and foremost. I would also like to give a little bit of a shout out because of the efforts of Chief Cochran and his, his firemen and, or I mean, Chief Cochran and his police officers and Chief Duke and his, his firemen, we had an accident a couple weeks ago on Burlingame where a car rolled down and, and the daughter, the young lady who was hurt was, is paralyzed from her waist down and, and that is one of my very good friends, Mark Elliott's daughter and Mark, many people around here know Mark Elliott as, like he was the 10th best athlete in Shawnee County according to the Capital Journal and all those type of things and just a good friend. She is in Lincoln at the rehab hospital, so I told him I would give a big shout out to those guys up there and, and then that we're thinking about. So again, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Well, I do appreciate the reminder that we need to be sensitive to how people are feeling in this season, celebrate if we can and, and reach out to them. I too got serenaded by the mayor and her entourage the other day and that was a lot of fun. Thank you so much. And I've, I shared with them that one of my dreams for all of our neighborhoods is that people would return to, my measure is if people trick or treat door-to-door in their own neighborhood and go caroling and so it was very close to my heart to have that happen. I also told you all that I was going to go to all the Nutcrackers and I did and I just need to report that Saturday, was it Saturday night, Friday night's performance of the Kansas Ballet with the symphony was beyond imagination. Oh my gosh, it was breathtaking, right here in, in Topeka and it was amazing. Mayor was there as well. Wow. And with that, have a great holiday, see you next year, if not before. Except those of us who aren't policy and finance, we're going to see each other for five hours tomorrow.
Councilwoman Claire.
I got to be involved with, I feel good, the couple that had their car stolen at Ronald McDonald House, my, my daughter's Association Sheepdog Impact Assistance was able to donate a car to them and that was such a good feeling. Today Soul Reason gave out tennis, tennis shoes to all the kids at Boys and Girls Club and it's always fun to watch them. And happy birthday to my husbands, whose birthday is the day before Christmas, so I kind of get slighted, but for the mayor, imagine our surprise when the doorbell rang, our TV was on and we were watching something. My husband and I looked at each other and said, who the heck? And we sat there and shook our heads. We grunted and groaned as we got out of our chairs and went to the door and guess who was there? Mayor Daley Slay and our friends from church looked at us and I said with a jerk, oh my, it's the
"Oh my, it's the mayor. What can she be doing?" And they busted out in song, which was our undoing. We laughed and smiled as they continued to sing. I was really glad my doorbell did ring. So thank you to them for the wonderful delight and for coming to our home on Sunday night.
Merry Christmas.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, first, Rule number 2.4, it's the right of the floor. I wanted to help Mr. Councilman Mays out. You're to address, any member designed to speak shall be recognized by the meeting chair, not the meeting chair and Councilwoman Ortiz, and that's what you did. I just wanted to correct you. 2.4, that's our rule. You'll have to suspend the rules if you want to recognize me, okay? Thank you, love you. Now I have just a little different point of view. You know, I'm from the east side. City Manager, you might want to write this down. Got your pen there? On Sunday, December the 16th, approximately at 7:27 p.m., I had some trespassers in my yard. I was sent, oh, there's the chief. Chief, you got this? I need to look into this. I was sent a check, a text that said, "Just left your house. Love you, was here to carol." Heart, heart, heart. I don't know if it was Carol was there or what was going on. And I put, oh my God, I'm in Lawrence. And then she's, they send me, it's an elected official, I don't know if she's broken any ethical things, bringing all those people. She sent me a Facebook.com and, and it, they were there in my front yard. I could tell by the rustle of the leaves I hadn't got up yet. And they sang "Joy to the World." Now, and then she had nerve enough to say, "I love you." And I just want to say, in all my 13 years, I've never had that happen. Never, ever. So thank you to the mayor for not being scared to come over there, because sometimes I'm scared to go over there, you know? But, you know, I thought that was just, just awesome. And she didn't want me to miss it, so she sent me the link and I just cried. And that's what it's all about. I was like, what in the world is she doing? What is it that you can't do? But thank you and Merry Christmas. And Merry Christmas to everybody. And when you find out who all them 19 people were, I want their names and numbers. Thank you, Mayor. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Right. Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz. On a serious note, for a long time, I really thought that we're extremely fortunate to live in a country where we're largely, largely free of government interference in our lives. But that was really confirmed over the weekend. I got to, it had nothing to do with the caroling.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to, to spend about a day and a half in Havana, Cuba. And I'll admit, my reasons for going there weren't to, you know, really learn a lot about the type of government and stuff there. But it was, it was a fantastic place. It was beautiful and the people were beautiful. But I have to say, the form of government they have over there, communism is not. At the end of the day, we had this great young man that took us around and at the end of the day, as he got to know us and was less guarded with what he was saying, he broke down and said, you know, "I feel, I'm a prisoner here. We cannot leave, we can't leave the island here and go anywhere, you know, unless you're some government official." He also said that if you're a known troublemaker, if you're someone who speaks up to your government, before they have any sort of national celebration, they come and get a truck, they come around, they round you up and you go out and work for about a week in sugarcane fields so you're not around for the press to see you. And, you know, just, you know, we talked tonight, we had some fun, we were talking about public comments and stuff. But, you know, thank God we live in a country, seriously, where people can come and speak to us, where, where we can get phone calls, you know? And I know we all get phone calls and emails, you know, and people are usually, when they call us, they're upset. But I, I thought, man, you know, the alternative, the alternative really stinks. So I guess, you know, in our reflection for the years, you know, thank God for all you guys and what you do and, and thank God we're here in this country. So Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Councilwoman Padilla.
It's gonna be hard to follow all of you after all of that. And even though Councilman, Councilman Mays gave me a hard time about being in an apron when the mayor and your entourage showed up. And I was busy cooking, so they caught me by surprise. I don't want to take a long time. I just do want to restate what you all have is that we're very fortunate to live where we are, to be able to do the things that we do and to celebrate this time of year in the way we choose to celebrate. And I want to thank this body that I sit with. I want to thank city manager and all of his staff for my first year on the council. It has been enlightening, educational and fun. And you've been, all been very patient and I look to all of you to give me advice and direction and for that, I'm very thankful. So all of you, have a very Merry Christmas and take care of yourselves. Stay away from Councilwoman Ortiz's front yard. She'll probably have dogs posted next time. So thank you, Mayor.
Dippity Mayor. Wrap us up?
Well, you know, they always say you save the best for last.
Not really.
The kicker is you all are what make us the best. This team, the staff behind us and everyone truly make this city go and make it run very well. I too appreciated the caroling. I think it was rather humorous that the night before, we had been out caroling in College Hill. And so it was kind of fun to be on the porch instead of out on the sidewalk. So I just wanted to tell everybody Merry Christmas. Please remember the reason for the season. It's not who can buy the most expensive gift or who can deliver the most gifts. It's remember your family and your friends, those that are less fortunate. It always pains me that it becomes a gift-giving challenge every year instead of remembering the, the people that you're really there to celebrate with. My other comment is for New Year's Eve. That's always a mixed blessing for a lot of people. Please be careful, but please get out there and celebrate your successes, plan for your future. I'm gonna have an incredibly big year next year, whether I'm ready for it or not, so I'm gonna live it up one last time. Thank you much, everybody.
All right. We have no public comments tonight. However, we do have a need to recess into two executive sessions. If the city attorney could please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed five minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
Okay, so we're gonna recess into executive session, five minutes, really quick. No action is expected to be taken. Do we have a motion for this? We have a motion by Councilwoman Emerson, we have a second by Councilmember Cohen. All those in favor, please vote. I mean, please vote. We're in executive session, I'm waiting for the hands to go up.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes. We will recess into executive session once the room is vacated. That will also allow the council at least five minutes for recess before we engage into the session.
No action has been taken. We do have a need to recess into a second executive session. The city attorney is quickly approaching, so that she could read the parameters for that second. Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Madam Mayor, before we do that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to extend after 10 to finish our business so we won't have to come out of executive session.
Absolutely. That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a second by Councilwoman Emerson. All those in favor of suspending the rule at 10 o'clock, please raise your right hand. Okay, the motion passes. Do my...
We have just, for those, sorry, the microphone was off. Councilwoman Ortiz just made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Emerson. It, we voted and it passed that we're going to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock. So we have suspended that rule. At this point in time, the city attorney is gonna read the parameters for the second executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body and Human Resources Director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the parameters, so we have a motion. We have a deputy mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz has second. Do, at this point, all those in favor? Yes, Councilwoman Hiller.
Your staff with us before? Strictly HR.
It is strictly HR. So all those in favor of recessing, raise your right hand. Okay, we now will recess into executive session. No action is expected to be taken.
The executive session has ended with no action taken. There being no further business before the meeting, we are adjourned.